And welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals, our January 9, 2020 meeting here at Town Hall. First on the agenda is an executive session. It's a closed-door session, so we'll be calling for a vote to go into executive session. We're going to ask you all to please leave the room, and we'll do that, and then we'll come back to our public hearing. So would anyone like to make a motion at this time?
So I'll make a motion to go into executive session?
Okay, and it's a roll-call vote, so we'll start off at this end of the table?
Aye.
Aye. One question. We're supposed to say for what purposes?
Oh, for the purposes, yeah, for the purposes of, Bob, I'll let you read it.
To review and discuss pending litigation at the Housing Appeals Committee, which is MEWAD versus Falmouth Zoning Board, 0213 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, Mass.
All right, and you have to state your name and then say aye?
James Morse, aye.
Jerry Potamus, aye.
Ken Foreman, aye.
Terrence Horry, aye.
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Mary Berry, aye.
Okay, so we'll be entering into executive session. We'll please ask everyone to leave the room and... Hello, everyone, again. We'll be calling the meeting back to order, the public portion of tonight's agenda. We'll ask everyone to please silence their cellphones at this time, and I'll introduce the board. Starting on my far right, your far left is James Morse, who's an associate member of the board, followed by Jerry Potamus, who is a full-voting member. Ken Foreman is to my right. He is the vice chairman of the board. My name is Terrence Horry. I'm the chair. To my left is Ed Van Kuren, who's a full-voting member, Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk, and Mary Berry, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary for the night. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the town bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's Office for the Commonwealth. All decisions made by the board are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to and from the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. We ask that public comment should be directed at the project itself. We also ask that you please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Such public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it just might simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should be recognized by the chair. Come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record. And we typically limit public comment to two minutes per person. The board will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, we may continue a hearing to a future date and time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. As for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve what be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three-to-two vote, is a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda items for tonight, we've already had executive session. We have public comment. We have two continuations, four new hearings, and open meeting items as well. So turning to public comment now. This public comment period is for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So was there anyone out there wishing to make any sort of comment on something that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none?
So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take the hearings out of order this evening, starting with the new hearings and then going to the continuations.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we would be starting with application 77-19, Kent, 24 Naushon South in North Falmouth.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass. General Laws, application number 77-19, you are hereby notified that Kevin F. and Robin J. Kent of Mansfield, Mass. have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3 and 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to remove the existing deck and construct an addition on subject property known as 24 Naushon Southwest Falmouth. For referrals, engineering, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Naushon South is a private right of way. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or rights of way. We do recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. Concom, no comment. Fire Department, no comment. Assessors Department, no comment. Planning, no comment. And there is one letter of support from the neighbor directly across the street.
Okay, for the applicants tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Kevin and Robin Kent, the owners of 24 Naushon South in West Falmouth. Mr. and Mrs. Kent are both here with us this evening. They are seeking in addition to an existing non-conforming dwelling. This property, 24 Naushon South, is located in West Falmouth in the Cliffs neighborhood. It's on a lot of 12,397 square feet, and it's located in the residential B zoning district. They've owned it for the last five years, but have lived here in Falmouth for the past 16 years, or owned a home here in Falmouth for 16 years. They're seeking to modify this structure in order to make it more useful and comfortable for their family. The existing house is a two-story, four-bedroom home with a footprint of approximately 2,620 square feet. It's non-conforming to the front, side yard setback being nine and a half feet where 10 feet is required, and it's also non-conforming to lot coverage by structures, being 21.13 percent where up to 20 percent is allowed by right and up to 25 percent is allowed by special permit. The existing ridge height on this structure is 27 feet 3 inches. What they're proposing is to expand the living space on the main floor by adding in addition to the rear of the house. This will have no effect on the non-conforming setback or the ridge height, as the ridge height of the addition will be 18 feet below the existing 27. The lot coverage by structure will increase to 24.15 percent. However, with the issuance of a special permit, that will eliminate the existing non-conformity, or that particular non-conformity. Due to the existing non-conformities and the expansion of the lot coverage by structure, it does require a special permit under Sections 240-3, 3C rather, and 240-69E. 240-3C holds that pre-existing non-conforming structures can be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what presently exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240, 216, and whether or not the proposal creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and whether or not reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. This proposal will eliminate the existing non-conforming lot coverage. There's no effect on the side yard setback, and there's no new non-conformity created. There's no impact on views or vistas, as this addition is entirely the rear of the house, and it does reasonably conform to the average of other dwellings in the neighborhood. 240-69E, which allows for lot coverage above 20 percent but below 25, asks the board to consider the size and height of the structures relative to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impacts on views and vistas, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embainments. As a noted, the lot coverage by structure will be 24.15 percent, which is well within the range that this board may permit. There's no impact on views and vistas. Again, there's no change to the ridge height, and there's no effect of shadow. As to the size and height of the structure relative to the others in the neighborhood, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet looking at the other dwellings within 300-foot radius. Of those 12 dwellings, seven had a larger footprint and 11 had a greater gross building area. So it's well within the established parameters for the neighborhood. There's no change to the number of bedrooms, so there's no effect on nitrogen for coastal embainments. Relative to the bylaw considerations, there's no adverse effects to this project, and certainly none that would overbalance the beneficial effects. For these reasons and given these considerations, I believe this board can and should grant a special permit. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time. One additional note before I do that, we did revise the plans to show a dry well to the rear of the addition, so that was submitted, and that's what we're looking at this evening, per the engineering comments.
Okay, it's time for the board questions. Mary, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I have a question about your lot comparison worksheet and your far-right column, where it says lot coverage by structure. And are these percentages?
They are, yes.
And I just note that there are only two other in that comparison where the percentage is larger. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is a relatively small lot for the neighborhood, but again, I think that when we're looking at the relative size and height of the structures compared to the other size and height of structures in the area, that again, seven have larger footprints and 11 of the 12 have significantly higher gross building areas.
So what are, for the people that might not see it, what are the two other ones that are larger, and how do they compare to this one?
There's, there's, are you referring to the...
Percentage?
I have to admit right now, I don't have a copy of my worksheet with me at the moment. I thought I had one in my file, but I do not.
All right, so the proposed is 24.15, and then the ones that are different, one is 37.7, and the other one is 31.34, but all the rest of them are much, well, they are less.
So that's, that is a division of the footprint over the, the square footage of the lot?
Absolutely, I understand.
So I think that the, what the bylaw says is look at the size and height of the structure relative to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, and looking at size and height, we've traditionally looked at footprints and gross building areas. So I think when you look at the worksheet, which shows the gross building areas of the other structures and the footprint of the other structures, it's certainly well below the average of those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, anything?
No questions.
Ed?
No questions.
Ken?
No questions.
James? And no questions from me right now. So we will turn it to members of the public. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project tonight? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing none. Back to the board.
I'm ready to move to close.
Second. Okay, to close, motion was made by Ken and seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
That would be the board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion approved by Jerry and seconded by Ken for now. On to findings.
It is reducing the maximum lot coverage. It's not entertaining any deviations, kind of the word.
It's reducing, reducing the non-conformity. It's not reducing the lot coverage.
With the issuance of a special permit, it's no longer non-conforming.
It's no longer non-conforming, but they are going at 24.15 percent. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's good use of the property. It's consistent with our regulations. I think he mentioned all of them. I don't know if, do we have to reiterate them? No adverse impact?
240, 216 is fine.
Okay, that's what I said.
That's what I heard.
And put in 240-3 and 240-69E. Should probably put in the findings there was a letter of support from the neighbor across the street. Should also put in the findings that when they were doing total lot coverage, that the patio was bluestone and the driveway is mostly pavers with spaces, so they did not count towards the total lot coverage, but if they did, they'd still be under the 40 percent.
If you can't see it from the street, it doesn't affect anybody else.
No change to the bedroom count.
That's important. They've added dry wells to satisfy engineers' concerns. The proposed ridge height of the addition is below what's existing. Anything else for findings?
Did we say more beneficial use of the property, or is that...
You did say that.
Yep. Did we mention the bulk calculations yet? Like, they fall within the...
We can mention that they did bulk calculations. I don't know if you want to percentage them, because there's only two out of the total street that actually are...
In terms of percent lot coverage?
On the percentages, yeah.
I think the testimony was that there were others that had greater, where footage.
And it is a smaller lot size compared to the rest of the neighborhood? Anything else for findings? Conditions?
For plans?
The revised plan, do we have the new?
It'd be the revised plans, and then even though they show it on the plan, that they have the stormwater infiltration measures for at least the new roof area at a minimum per engineering.
Obtaining a trench permit from the town in which the work is being performed, if required, that was in...
Yep. We should also include the normal language regarding that no stormwater runoff be directed towards public property butters or rights of way.
All right, anything else for conditions?
Put a new house sign on there. Use the street number.
Oh, was there a, the engineering comment included that? All right, anything else? Okay, so the motion to approve was made by Jerry and seconded by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Okay, up next, we have application 81-19. Ready? 12 Buzzards Bay Ave and Woods Hole.
Good evening, members of the board.
I just have to read this in first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So application number 81-19, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass. General Laws, you hereby notify that Christopher M. Reddy of Woods Hole, Mass. has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-68A of the Code of Falmouth to allow in addition to the second floor of the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as 12 Buzzards Bay Ave, Woods Hole. For referrals, Concom, no comment. Engineering, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way, public utilities. Buzzards Bay Ave is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or rights of way. We do ask that the board recommend, or recommend, that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the roof. We also recommend adding the following condition, which is per Section 99-1, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence, affixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. They also put a memo. We reviewed the revised plan of land prepared for Christopher M. Reddy, number 12 Buzzards Bay Ave, dated October 4, 2019, but revised 12/4/19 by Homes in McGrath, Inc., and offer the following comments. Two dry wells have been added to the plans, however, no connection information has been provided, so we recommend that the board add the following condition or similar, that all stormwater runoff from the roof will be captured and infiltrated in the two dry wells shown on that plan. If this condition is included, then no further revision to the plan regarding dry wells would be necessary. Fire Department, no comment. Assessors Department, no comment. Planning Board, no comment. Health Department, the property has a three-bedroom septic system, and the proposed project appears to remain at three bedrooms, so the remodel proposed doesn't affect the existing septic system. That's everything on the list for us.
And now for the applicant tonight.
Good evening, members of the board and chair. I am the applicant, Christopher Reddy, and I ask for a continuance for today's hearing. Our representatives from Homes and McGrath have not arrived yet, so I ask if we can continue until they arrive.
Okay.
So you can just put the case on to be heard a little later tonight?
Yes, I appreciate that.
That's fine.
Do we need a motion for that, or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion to put the case on at a later time this evening, once the representatives of Homes in McGrath arrive.
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You can, do you want to keep those?
Do you want to hang on to that?
Yeah.
Oh. I could hang on to it.
They're going to come.
I don't want to mix up the parts.
All right, he'll hang on to that. Okay, so up next, we have application 80-19, Duncan, 18 Bell Tower Lane in Woods Hole.
So application number 80-19, being all persons affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass. General Laws, you are hereby notified that Margaret J. Duncan of Brookline, Mass. has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-68D of the Code of Falmouth to remove shed, construct deck, and attach garage addition with habitable space above on subject property known as 18 Bell Tower Lane, Woods Hole, Mass. For referrals, there was a referral by Concom saying the project was being heard on 12/18, and we do have a decision from Concom with an order of conditions dated January 8, 2020 from Engineering. Self case was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way, public utilities. Bell Tower Lane is a public right of way in this area. What is shown for work in the town right of way relaying gravel will not require filing a driveway permit with the Engineering Division. Any changes to this proposed work will require review by Engineering to determine if a permit will be required. There are two posts and a chain across the driveway that are located within the town right of way. Any structure in the town right of way requires a license. Does the applicant have a license for these structures? Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or rights of way. Two dry wells are indicated on the plan along with the detail, however, there is no indication what will be connected to them. To avoid a plan revision, we recommend that a condition be included in any approval that at least the new roof be connected to those dry wells. Bell Tower Lane is a congested area at times and has come before the Traffic Advisory Committee for parking issues in the past. What is the plan for material staging and contractor vehicles? We recommend that the board set a condition that all construction material be stored on the property. Nothing shall be stored in the Bell Tower Lane right of way or the parking area for Taft Park. Recommend the following condition also be included in the approval, that upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1, affixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. Fire Department, no comment. Assessors Department, the former address is number 18 Park Street. And Planning Board, no comment. There's something here from wastewater, so... I guess this building has been connected to the town sewer, and because of that, the modification does not trigger the flow neutral bylaw because it is three bedrooms, and not expanding on the three bedrooms. And then there's just some comments if they need to, if they need to replace any lines from wastewater. That's it.
Okay. And for the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I have some revised plans that I'd like to submit. So I just want to note, those revised plans show a slightly different location for replacement tree. It's not perring on these plans. These are the original plans that were filed, but the proposed addition is as shown on this plan. So to begin, my name's Jonathan Polony. I'm here for the applicant, Margaret Duncan. Her husband and son are here and present tonight. The property is located at 18 Bell Tower Lane, and what's being proposed is, in addition to the side of the building, increasing the existing structure, there's going to be a garage below with dwelling above, two bedrooms. It's going to slightly increase the square footage of the building. This is a non-conforming lot. It's 1,000 square feet. The building's been here since 1920. The lot was originally part of a larger lot. It was subdivided in 2004 and purchased by Mrs. Duncan and her family in 2013. There are a couple of other structures on this lot, two sheds, one of which is being removed, and that will allow for the proposed addition to be constructed on the side yard. The proposed addition is going to comply with all the zoning setbacks, and it's going to be more conforming with the removal of the shed, which actually encroached on one of the side yard setbacks. Under 240, Section 3, this project is being proposed under that section to alter and extend the non-conforming structure that's on the lot. to alter and extend the non-conforming structure that's on the lot. It complies with all of 240, Section 216. It meets all the requirements there. The first one, the site's adequate in size and it's suitable for this intended use. As I said, this structure's been in existence for over 100 years as a residential structure. The lot coverage is not going to exceed 20%. And the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking is not going to exceed 20% or the 40% that's allowed. There's no change in use that's being proposed. It's just an addition of some dwelling spaces in the garage. The proposed improvements will increase the safety and traffic flow on the property to the property. You can see that the parking area is going to be slightly widened to allow cars to come in and exit in better. Rather than having to back out onto Bell Tower Lane, they'll be able to turn around on the lot and then exit out in a much better way. As you noted, that road coming in is in the park. There's a lot of parking for both the park and for other residential, another residential house with tenants on Bell Tower Lane. So this will make it easier for cars to navigate out without interfering with that. Also, the construction of this property is in keeping with other houses in the neighborhood. Many of the other houses along Millfield Street and Bell Tower Road are one and three-quarter, two-story. There are a couple two-and-a-half story. So the size of this house at 25 foot, six inches is going to be comparable and if, probably a little bit less than the other houses. It is connected to the municipal sewer, and we're going to be increasing the bedrooms to three. That's within what's allowed under this bylaw. The utilities are adequate for that site. There's going to be no change or increase in use of public services. There's not going to be any effect on affordable housing, doesn't require approval for parking, and will be in harmony with the general purpose, the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. So I think under those requirements, it's a beneficial project and should be approved.
Thank you. We'll turn it to Board questions. James, would you like to start us off?
So when all said and done, what non-conformities remain?
The one non-conformity that's going to remain is the setback from Title 5. So there is a...
It should be 50 feet?
It should be 50 feet. It's currently 41 feet. And with the changes to the decks, it's going to be increased to 42 feet.
That's it for me.
Ed, anything?
No questions this time.
Bob?
Yeah, so could you just respond to the engineering comments regarding that post and chain? Do they have a license for that, or?
I'm not aware of any license. They're fine with moving that onto the property so it's out of the town right-of-way.
And what is the management plan during construction for vehicles and materials?
My understanding is everything will be able to be contained on-site?
That's all I have.
Mary, anything?
Yeah. So it is actually on sewer? Because there was some question regarding that.
There's no question.
Have they been paying bills on that? Because there was question. Oh, they have been.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then... Do you have any idea at all what type of a sewer pipe is there?
I...
Is it the original? Because there's some question about whether it's a VC sewer pipe.
I'm not, I'm not sure what actual pipe is there.
It was, these were just raised as questions by town employees.
Was that, that was on the referral from engineering?
Yeah, so I guess what it was, so on wastewater, it appears they might have been connected to town sewer, but they, the town didn't realize they were connected to town sewer. So, there's a couple comments that came in here, and one was, since the sewer connection was apparently made, it then became a potential liability issue between the two properties once the land was subdivided. It says, "If the sewer line clogs downstream of the manhole, it could back up into either of both properties." "If the original VC sewer pipe has not been replaced, the line is especially vulnerable to clogging from roots." And they also asked if there was a utility easement in place. So I guess, you know, we'll meet it with the three bedrooms. They just didn't know it had been connected, so they have no verification that...
Of what pipe is there?
What was actually done or needed.
I am Michael Graff. We prepared the plan. Amy Lowell called me, and I furnished her with a plan where this was subdivided in the 1960s. And this was an original connection. So it was subdivided, and apparently that it was... The bottom line is, the pipe does go out to, to... Yes, to Millfield Street. But it's been that way for 50 years. So, no doubt, there is, no matter what, they have the right to go and, as far as I'm concerned, repair that pipe because it's a very critical component. So, in any case, the house has been connected to the sewer. The only answer I got was she was going to go back and basically make sure they started paying for the sewer.
So do you know, she mentioned here also, is there a utility easement in place? Is that something that they needed?
There is a utility easement in place.
So I guess, have they been paying for sewer?
No, it just came, the town just realized.
So, so I...
They have not been paying a sewer use fee. If you're on the sewer, your water pipes, they generally charge more for water to collect, and so...
I only was asking because this other gentleman said that they were paying, so...
Well, they'll get a bill now.
Sounds like it.
I guess I assume that they had been paying since they had been contacted. I really was just trying to convey that the connection has always been there.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Members of the public, do you have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Anyone out there at all? All right, back to the Board.
I guess motion to close.
Second. Okay, motion to close by Bob, second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. How would the Board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Bob and second by Ed for now. Findings?
240-3C, 240-68D, 240-216. They will be removing a shed, building a deck, and adding garage addition that will have habitable space above. They will be adding a bedroom going from a two to a three. Three bedrooms is allowed on the town sewer system is the max. The one non-conformity, too, I think it's the wetland in back, is actually being increased to 42 feet.
And I think they're getting rid of a side yard non-conformity.
Getting rid of a side yard. The representative mentioned that he is not aware that they have a license for the post and chain that are located in the town right-of-way. So they would be amenable to moving that onto their property. And it also mentioned that their plan for material and staging would keep all the parking and materials on the property. There are some drywells on the, on the plan. They'll need to be shown as connected. The proposed addition will conform to all other setbacks. Increases utilization. Increases, it's a better traffic flow for safety.
Just one, I think, Bob?
Yeah.
I think it's, they don't trigger the flow-neutral bylaw.
Yeah, that's, that's the next one I have here. So because they're connected and they're keeping it through, at three bedrooms, this modification does not trigger the flow-neutral bylaw. And then even with the proposed addition, both the lot covers by structure and lot covered by structure, parking, and paving are both well below the allowed. Structure's at 20%. The 20% allowed is at 14.2, and the up to 40% is at 17.4.
By Concom, wait a minute.
Yep, they did apply to...
Yeah, they did.
Yep, they did apply to Concom, and they have an approval with an order of conditions.
Anything else for findings?
That's it.
Okay, conditions?
Per plans...
Revised plans?
Yeah, further revised plans. Plans to also show the new roof will be connected to the drywells, the drywells to contain all the stormwater runoff.
Move the two posts and the chain back.
Yeah, two posts and chain to be relocated on the property, since they currently are in the town right-of-way. All construction material and parking of construction vehicles shall be on the property. Nothing shall be stored in the Bell Tower Lane right-of-way or the parking area for Taft Park. Upon completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence per Section 99-1. Condition it on three, it max at three bedrooms.
So also typically, if there are back fees that are due to the town, that would be a condition of this approval? And that they would not be eligible to get a building permit until that was satisfied or an arrangement was made?
If there were back fees.
If that's the case.
So whatever the wording on that, that'd be great.
Okay.
I'd like to add that they should coordinate with Public Works, both the Water and Wastewater Department. Traditionally, if there's any modification potentially to the construction, even though you're approved next to the sewer, they may be concerned of how you may be disturbing the sewer going into the public, beyond the sewer.
For the pipes.
For the pipes.
Yeah.
And if they haven't been charged, maybe there's not a utility, a water utility, so they can't charge you. So that's why I'm asking, I'm explaining to him to go to the Water Department and the Wastewater Department.
There was also something mentioned about notification to other property owners if the sewer line clogs downstream of the manhole. And that has to do with that sharing of that line.
Right.
And if there's any changes proposed to the work in the town right-of-way besides relaying of the gravel, they would then be required by engineering to see if a permit is required.
And on the plans, does that deal with the two red maples?
Revised plans?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And that's part of the Concom, is that?
I think so.
Should also condition it as to go along with the Concom approval, order of conditions.
Anything else for conditions?
I think that's it.
All right.
I think there was one other condition mentioned, or possible one, about when the construction would be taking place due to, I think it had to do with so many activities occurring there. Am I right?
I mean, there was one regarding the congested air in Bell Tower, but that had mainly to do with keeping everything out of the right-of-way.
Maybe something on the times of construction or something? I don't know.
Was it Concom? Was it Concom requirements, or?
I don't, I don't know. And I might be incorrect.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything in here, just the one on the congestion of Taft Park.
Well, I suppose if everything takes place on that property, then...
But I think we put it in and as, but they may want to supply to the zoning office a contact number where they have had issues before with Traffic Advisory, in case there's a problem.
Okay, anything else? So that was a motion to approve made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Ready, now that your representation is here, if I proceed with your application?
Is Mike in the hall?
Oh, he might be.
Mike.
Mr. McGrath?
Good evening.
So I already read all this into the file. Does anyone need a...
Is, is my presentation here? I sent you a presentation thing.
Good question.
I did, I'm honest.
I think the engineers usually put it on the computer. We might've got a hard copy.
I always bring you a hard copy. Well, I can, you all have copies of the plan. I'll just talk. This site is... Are we ready?
I think we are.
More than ready.
This site is at 12 Buzzards Bay Avenue in Woods Hole. It's, it's an existing house, and they're proposing to change the second floor. Since it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, we need to get a special permit from the Board of Appeals. The lot's about 5,000 square feet, but the minimum setback of the structure is 8.3 feet from the front yard. So, the zoning bylaw obviously requires a 25-foot front yard, but this, this is a structure that was constructed in the '30s, and so it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. To get a special permit, what we have to do is, we have to satisfy certain conditions in the general laws and also in our own FALMA zoning bylaw. First, we have to prove that the site is adequate for the use and, and obviously, since the structure's been available, since the lot's been developed since 1935, it obviously is a suitable and adequate in sight. The proposed improvements will have no impact whatsoever on traffic flow because we're not increasing the bedrooms or the amount of people that will live in it. It will not truly have a, a visual impact on the neighborhood. We have given you architectural plans, and the, basically, the modification is, is very minor. There's an existing Title V system installed in 2000. We're not increasing the flow, and it has the proper amount of, it's adequate in size for the, for the proposed addition. There's adequate utilities on the site. Will not have an effect on the amount of affordable housing. We don't require Planning Board approval for parking. And we think it's in general harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw for getting a special permit in Woods Hole. It is a small lot, but in the past, basically, the Board of Appeals has in the past issued special permits for projects like this. So I'd be happy to answer questions. The architect is here also, as well as the owner. So if you have any specific questions concerning the application, we stand ready to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Mary, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Bob?
No questions.
No questions.
Ken?
What, so you're going to 23 feet?
Bobby?
You're going to 23 feet. That will be the final ridge height?
I believe that, I'd have to look at the architectural plans, so...
Just wanted to confirm that. Okay. I think that's my only comment.
No comment.
And nothing from me either, so we will turn it to members of the public. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project, sir?
Thank you. For the record, David Martin, my wife and I own Number 10 Buzzards Bay Avenue. We're direct abutters to the proposed work, and I'm here to fully support the project. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else have any questions? Sir?
I'm Peter Bungus, 19 Buzzards Bay Avenue diagonally across the street. I think this looks like a good change for this little house, and I'd like you to approve it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Ken and second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and what would be the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Approved by Bob and second by Ken. Findings?
240-68A, 240-3C. It's in addition to a second floor of a pre-existing non-conforming. Current nonconformity from street is 8.3 feet where 25 is required and 7.1 feet from the northeast lot line where 10 is required. Ridge height will be 23 feet. The Title V was upgraded in the year 2000. It has Board of Health approval for three bedrooms. Any alteration from that would need Board of Health approval. Increases utilization. Current drywells on plans don't show the connection, so that should be updated.
Anything else for findings? All right, conditions?
So plan to be updated to show that the two drywells added to the plan have the connection info. All stormwater runoff will be captured and infiltrated to those two drywells that are shown on the plan. Will conform to Section 99-1, affixing legible numbers required. Time for compliance upon construction completion. Direction of any stormwater runoff to public rights-of-way. Home to remain three bedrooms.
Anything else for, for conditions?
No, but you know, add, why don't you add to the findings that neighbors at Number 10 and Number 19 spoken approval of the property?
Okay. So if that does it, there was a motion to approve by Bob and second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, up next we have Application 79-19, Shuck, 25 Woodneck Road in West Falmouth.
So Application Number 79-19, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws, you hereby notify that John W. and Gina Shuck of Georgia, Delaware, have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as 25 Woodneck Road, West Falmouth. For referrals. Engineering, the application was reviewed for impacts on public rights-of-way and public utilities. Woodneck Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or by doors of ruts-of-way. The project is permitted through the Conservation Commission, and therefore, we defer erosion, sediment control, and stormwater management requirements for this project to their permit. CONCOM has, including here, has attached their order of conditions. The session's no comment. Health Department, the Board of Health held a hearing regarding the variances needed for the septic system on 10/21/2019. The variances were granted. The plans show three bedrooms which match the design flow on the proposed septic system. Planning Board, no comment. Fire Department, no comment.
That's it. Okay, and for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm attorney with Amen Clower Law from here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, John and Gina Shuck, the owners of 25 Woodneck Road. We're here before you tonight to seek to raise both R-A-Z-E and R-A-I-S-E and rebuild this existing non-conforming dwelling. It's located at 25 Woodneck Road, which is located on the northern side of the street in a budding little sippervisant marsh. It's on a lot with upland of just over 15,000 square feet. It's in the residential B zoning district and is located entirely in the AE15 flood zone. The existing house is a two-story, three-bedroom dwelling with a detached garage and gazebo. Total footprint of those structures is just over 1,300 square feet, and it is non-conforming. The dwelling is non-conforming to the setback to the three-foot contour, being 37 feet where 50 feet are required by the bylaw. And the detached garage is non-conforming to the front yard setback being 8.8 feet where 25 is required. The applicant is seeking to make upgrades, has sought, rather, to make upgrades to the existing structures, but due to the flood zone regulations and the scope of repairs and the upgrades required, compliance with the flood zone standards is mandatory, meaning that the elevation of the structure has to change. Given that, it only makes sense to raise R-A-Z-E and rebuild the structure in a compliant manner pursuant to the Building Code and the FEMA regulations. Under those regulations, the structure must be raised so that all habitable space and mechanicals are at least one foot above the flood elevation, which in this case is elevation 15. So everything needs to be at least elevation 16. What's being proposed is a two-and-a-half-story dwelling with remaining detached garage. The garage will remain in its present, present location. The dwelling will be elevated so that, to be approximately seven feet above grade. It's at approximately 9.5 for an elevation currently, in order to comply with those FEMA regulations. The proposed ridge height of the structure will be 34.5 feet. It will remain three bedrooms, and the new septic is being installed. The lot coverage by structure, though expanded, is still only 13%, which is well under the 20% that's allowed. The setback to the three-foot contour will remain 37 feet, and the front yard setback to the garage will likewise remain unchanged. Due to the existing nonconformities, this does require a special permit under Section 240-3C, which again, 240-3C states that pre-existing non-conforming dwellings or structures may be changed by special permit provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what presently exists. The board is asked to consider 240-216 and whether or not any new dimensional nonconformities are being created, whether or not there's an impact or impairment of the views and vistas, and whether or not it reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. The proposed alterations are a significant improvement over the existing conditions, specifically because it will conform to the flood zone standards, again, moving all the habitable space, storage, and mechanicals out of the flood zone. There's no substantial detriment to the project, certainly none more, as it, as it exists, rather. No detriments come close to outweighing the benefit of the flood zone compliance. There are no new nonconformities. There's no creation of new dimensional nonconformities. Though larger, there's no impact on views and vistas, and it's well under the parameters allowed for lot coverage by structure, as well as lot coverage by structures paving and parking. For these reasons and given these considerations, I believe this board can and should issue a special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. James, any questions?
No questions.
Jerry?
No questions.
Ken?
So I'm just looking to see where your, where, where is it, is the closest point, the 37?
It is, it is located, I can zoom in a little bit here. So if you look right here, this is the closest point. It's 37 feet existing and 37 feet proposed to this blue line, which is the three-foot contour.
Okay, so... Edge of BVW, what's?
It's a CONCOM term? I'm blanking on what it means.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that's-
I'm blanking on what it means. Vegetated wetland?
Okay. Bordering vegetated wetland. I think I got it.
Yep, we'll go with that.
And the closest there you are is, looks like 34 feet.
Yeah, and that, that's been approved by CONCOM.
Okay, I guess my only concern on this project is, is the, the height. You're hopping up against the 35-foot limit.
We are.
And I'm wondering if maybe we should have an as-built at the end.
I think that's a perfectly reasonable request.
All right.
Is that the condition?
Anything?
Crowd applauding.
So Kevin, just, I didn't hear it. So what, what is the lot coverage is now?
Uh, lot coverage as exists is, I believe, 9%, 9%, and it's going to propose to be 13%.
And the height was, you said 37?
The, the height will be-
And the height was 35?
34.5 to the ridge.
That's all, yeah.
Mary, anything?
Yeah, what's your increase in your footprint?
About 600 square feet, I believe.
How much?
About 600 square feet, I believe.
So it's a, roughly a 46% increase in your footprint?
Approximately. It's a, it's a relatively modest house, and they're looking to expand it, so it's more useful for their family.
Anything else, Mary? Okay, any other board questions?
It has Board of Health approval.
Yes, they-
Yes.
Got a variance.
They got a variance?
They get a variance from the Board of Health.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And what would be the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Bob and second by Ed again. Findings?
240-3C, 240-216. It is a raise and reconstruct in substantially the same footprint.
Well, I, I would not say that. That's a 46% increase in the footprint.
46%, but it's not much of a-
It's six-
Still less than 2,000 square feet, 1,900 and something.
Yeah, it's, it's currently 1312, and it's going to 1914.
That does include the gazebo and garage.
So why don't we just say it is a 46% increase?
No, we can just say raise and reconstruct, yeah. You could put a 46% increase.
Still well, you know-
It's well below the-
It's well below lot coverage requirements.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's the important-
Absolutely.
We don't, we don't care what.
I just don't think it would be an appropriate characterization.
So the nonconformities will be staying the same. It's 37 feet from the three-foot contour.
That's closest point.
Structure, lot coverage going from 9% to 13%, well under the 20.
There's a substantial increase in the height of the structure in order to conform with the FEMA requirements.
FEMA requirements, and that will be 34.5 feet.
Right, with seven feet above grade before you reach habitable space, if I understood correctly.
There is a variance granted by the Board of Health for the three-bedroom septic. It matches the design flow. There's no increase in the nonconformities. Engineering will defer to CONCOM for erosion, sediment controls, and stormwater management requirements.
Okay, anything else for findings? Conditions?
Per plans and where we are at 34.5, I do think we should have an as-built.
I think in the findings you might mention that they're putting in a new septic.
Their what?
Putting in a new septic system.
And I don't have that planned, but does it say what kind they're putting in?
I think it's just a standard Title V.
I think it's an IA.
I thought it was an IA.
It's an IA.
And I, I do think we should say that if it is. That, that's what I was looking for.
I, I don't know.
What's the Board of Health say?
I think it's marked on the plan, actually.
I do.
Yeah. Do you look to the easterly side of the house?
Oh, it does. It says enhanced nitrogen removal unit.
Yeah, that really should be noted.
Boy, their representative should have pushed that one.
Hell.
You have to give the board something to find out.
Can't win them all.
Does it say enhanced or an innovative?
It says enhanced.
Yep.
Dangerous term.
It doesn't say how it's enhanced, but it says-
It's a dangerous term.
I didn't draw the plan.
And it says it has a UV tank and pump chamber.
That could be enhanced. Per Board of Health, right? And as Mary said, enhanced.
So that's worth, certainly worth mentioning.
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. And for conditions, we have per plans and we need an as-built for the height.
Because you're so close to the-
Also the dry, the drywells and gutters on the roof.
So all, uh-
Something going to it.
So all erosion, sediment controls, and stormwater management requirements will be per CONCOM in their permit.
Okay.
Different from Title V in some way.
Anything else for conditions?
Yeah, you need your P-99-1, affixing of legible numbers required with a time limit up for compliance.
My new favorite section.
I need to look at that section.
Thank you, Engineering, for the new standard referral. Anything else?
I'm sorry, are we to-
Conditions?
He distracted me. Are we to conditions? Did we mention the as-built?
Yes.
We mentioned the as-built because of the height. We mentioned 99-1. We mentioned all the erosion per CONCOM.
All right, and does that do it for conditions?
I think so.
All right, so the motion approved was made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At a tall, and it's long and fellow.
I couldn't find it.
Where is it?
It's missing in one of them.
We'll get another set down there.
The lane that-
One that was up there.
The foundation lane and stuff, the plant we had didn't have it in it. Just had the architectural. That's in the miscellaneous part.
We'll be taking a five-minute break.
Request to add additional trees, larger trees, and at this point, we're, we're pretty comfortable that we've done a good job of buffering this. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, back to board questions. Mary, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
Bob?
No, so just a quick question on the depiction that's on the screen. So what of those trees actually just exist, the, the ones in the right corner? Is there anything depicted on there that actually isn't there?
Yes.
So, so what areas of the, of the tree line shown don't exist?
Most of it doesn't exist now. The, there are some, some existing large trees in here. Believe there's a few big ones right in here in this corner. We're adding these.
Okay.
Yeah, there's five or six large evergreens that we're adding in there.
And on the, and on that opposite corner, on, on the lower left, is there anything there? I know it says existing.
There's some pretty sparse-looking existing pines. There are a lot of them, and there's also some deciduous trees along the back, not, not very many. We're not proposing to add any large trees in there. There are also grade, by the way, the grade in this area starts to fall off quite a bit, so to, to add things that would help the buffering, we'd probably have to do some filling.
That's all I have, Anna.
All right, no, nothing else. Ken?
Um, no, I have no.
All right, and James?
Just reviewing, nope, no other questions.
All right, and no questions from me. So any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding the project, sir?
Some comments, but might get off a little bit. Timothy Smith, one seventy-five Deer Pond Road. And if I can, somebody's thumb drive in here, is that yours? It's a fancy one, Nick. Just on my son's college, thumb drives, gets credit for the name. All right, so in an effort, in an effort to kind of show the relation of what Nick just showed regarding this current plan that he just had, John was good enough, who is the other butt of the Hallinan's, was able to show, you know, an overlay of how our property lines up along the backside of this project. So in some of the drawings that were forwarded to us by Mr. Marioni, you can see the, the current fence that's, that has been proposed. Our properties that we've kind of, you know, that John's been able to depict in overlay, you can see how the property is in relation to the current fence, which is just, obviously goes along the property line. So right along that left side, where Mr. Marioni had stated that the grade was starting to go off, there is some trees in there, and I do have some pictures to show that. But in relation to our property, where those two wings are, that fencing right there will offer some privacy to us. I took some photos to go from the left side next to my property that goes all the way down to the Hallinan property. And if you can see that the first photo is, you know, shows the stake, that's the, the furthest bound that, or stake along the property line. That's, goes right adjacent to the recreation land that runs parallel to the, the proposed project. I took, and to make it a little easier to see, I put some fluorescent marker, which is exactly right next to it, just to kind of show you, so how, how some of the trees look in there. So when we're talking about density, and Mr. Marioni is correct, it is a little sparse in there, but again, there is some growth in there. And as you move along, you can see the property line in relation to my, the shed at the back of my property. As you're looking in the woods, and from where that canoe is, if you were looking off to your right-hand side, that would go over to that stake that was shown on the edge of the property. This middle picture depicts the property line in relation to the, to, to the, to the backside of my property and by the shed. And the third picture kind of shows from that property line over to the edge of the first building that, which is building or unit number three. With respect to the backside of my property, you can, obviously, that back, that's that same marker, that's the property line. And again, the furthest photo over, if you're looking at that, that, that stake right there and that orange marker, that is the, again, the corner of unit number three. That same bound that's, that I, that I showed, that's at the backside of, just adjacent to my property by the shed. If you look towards that orange marker, the larger orange marker, that's the corner of unit number two, which is, you know, is by where the fence line would end. As you're going towards the Hallinan property, these stakes are all in relation to the, the building, building number four. And if you look at the center one, that's the corner of one building, and way out in, in here, you can just barely make out the orange, but that's the end of building number four. And if you look, that's the bound that, in the center right there, that's the stake right there, that's the corner of building number four. And that's the backside of the Hallinan property, which there's two structures that are there. The lot line is adjacent to their property, and again, that corner of unit number four is, you know, obviously is, you know, nearby. That, the same bound that's right here, and the last photo that I have is the very edge of the property. And as you look towards the, the corner of the, to the right of that bound would be the power lines. And as you're looking away, that is that whole corner area just behind the fencing that is being proposed. So I know that there was some discussion at the last meeting regarding the type of landscaping and trees and, and what some thought might be beneficial. I, I appreciate that Mr. Marioni's worked towards, you know, getting, you know, changing the fence design, trying to keep some of the vegetation and current trees and such in place and in a natural state, which is what we would prefer. However, you know, I, I know there were some comments by the board, and if there's any suggestions that can be made with regards to any other type of buffering, you know, it certainly is welcome for, for all parties concerned. So I just wanted to present this and, and show, you know, how it all relates to that one first landscaping drawing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
Any questions? Um, sir?
Hi, everybody. I'm Dennis Murphy, Precinct Five. My office, I own a real estate agency, and my office represents the, the seller of the land here. So I thought I'd come and just say a few words. I also, I just want to point out that I spent about nine years in those seats that you guys are in, so I want to thank you all for your service to the town. My first question is, there has been some talk about, the last meeting, about reducing some of the three-bedroom units to two bedrooms, because the town has a need for two-bedroom units. But it wasn't pointed out that the town also says it has a need for three-bedroom units, which this project meets. The applicant also does have another project going on that I'm sure you're familiar with on Brick Kiln, that is twenty units. Sixteen of those are two-bedroom units, and four of them are three-bedroom units there. So I think the applicant's doing his part to provide two-bedroom units to the town here. And I think this project, as it stands with the three-bedroom units, is, is a sound project. I also just wanted to, there was talk about potentially reducing the number of units by one. As I'm sure you guys are all familiar, forty B works in, in fours. So if you reduce him from twelve to eleven, that's going to take away one of the, the market rate units, which I think could really hurt the profitability of this unit, of the project, putting the whole thing in jeopardy. And then lastly, the last hearing was held up, it wasn't closed, in part, Edward, I think it was you that said that some information had been submitted that day, that you didn't have a chance to review, and that was one of the main reasons that the, the hearing was continued. So I just want to check, I know the applicant has to get all information in a week before, so that all of you have time, when you're volunteering your time here, to come in and review. And I just want to check and make sure that there was nothing new that was submitted in the last couple of days that you guys haven't had a chance to review, and, and there's nothing that's going to hold up potentially closing this hearing tonight.
I don't think there was anything in the last couple of days. Bob, nothing in the file?
No, the, the only question I had, and I don't think it would be a holdup, is that Mr. Marioni resubmitted the CMAs versus three-bedrooms and two-bedrooms units, but the ones that were submitted were the same ones from June, but they go back to the year 2016. Was there anything more recent, or was, was this the one you meant to submit?
Those were the comps we had at the time, and that was the best we could probably, in fact, we're having trouble coming up with two-bedroom condo comps for these.
Well, these were all single-family homes.
Right, that's why we had to do single-family. You'll see in the, the letter from the agent that did that, that he had to use homes because he couldn't find condos that were comparable size and price to these.
So I guess my only question was the, the sales that were in 2016, which is going on four years now, there was nothing more recent than that on?
That's what he, that's what he put together for me in June of this, of 2019. Now, you know, I understand that's seven months ago, but I was referring to something I had submitted back then.
No, I just want to make sure, because this is what you had submitted before, and I, I did finally get a chance to look at it this way, and I was just surprised at the, the dates of the information, that's all.
I'm sure they both moved, if the, if the two bedrooms moved up, so did the threes in sale price, so it's, they usually sort of trail each other.
Any other members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns? Anyone at all? Sir?
Mind if I use your thumb drive again?
Oh, yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm actually got to look at it. Yeah, we've all seen the photos of John Hallinan, one forty-five Deer Pond Road. Bear with me for one moment. Yeah, the one you just had. Oh, color, gotcha. All right, as my neighbor, Mr. Smith, pointed out, one of the photos we have is right here back on one of my lots where there is basically no trees here. And he has proposed that you're going to be putting in some, I would like to mention that he's been great working with us and changing stuff. I, I don't know how it works as far as your conditions go, as putting down, yes, this is what's going to be put in, absolutely, these will be here, as whatnot, like, we have good buffering, more or less, that's here, stuff that's going to stay. But there's basically nothing here. So I would just like to have in writing at some point, that my owners, of whether it be arborite, these are other trees that are going in. And the only other question I would ask is if some of the trees are in rough shape, that whatever we might need to take down can go replace it with something in kind, just to keep the natural buffering that's there. Like I said, some of them are in rough shape, would be better coming down, as long as we can put something up in, in its place. But that was, that's concerning. And the only other thing I would like to ask is, as far as lighting on the buildings, I don't know if that's something we talked about here, as far as like floodlights or lighting, if there's stuff that's maybe facing down as opposed to out towards our property, if there's stuff that's going to be on twenty-four hours a day, if there's streetlights in there on the small circle, I don't know how that's addressed.
So to answer your question about the landscaping, it's, we usually do require some sort of landscape architect plans to be filed along with, with the decision that we make. And as far as the lighting is concerned, we usually condition it dark sky compliant lighting, so it's, it doesn't really, no floodlights, so it doesn't really flood the area in terms of the lighting.
Okay, I am familiar with the dark sky one, and like I said, he's been very helpful with us in this process, and that, that, we have that one bare spot, there's in one of the photos that Mr. Smith put up, that I would just make sure we had something there, is not options, but yeah, this is what's going to get done. Like I said, just the process I'm wanting to get educated on is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions, comments, concerns regarding the project? Ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. Diane Wells, forty-seven Crooked Meadow Road. You know, I, sitting here listening over the last few months, this already seems like a done deal. And I just needed to make a comment for that, because it's bothered me all along that this has already been decided, for the most part. The other problem that I, or questions that I have, is this traffic study. I'm just not sure how these numbers mesh with what we see in terms of the high school kids cutting through, summertime traffic. I waited in my driveway to come out this morning, six cars went through, and this was at quarter of seven this morning. And this isn't a busy time of year, so I'm not sure how you come up with the numbers for the traffic flow when I know what I see, and the numbers just don't add up. You know, it is a safety issue. We've been hit, almost hit numerous times coming out. We almost lost an animal because he got out of the yard, and there was just so much traffic. We have people who, we have grandchildren, who we will not allow in the front yard after this. So, you know, I just had to voice my concerns, however the chips may fall, because, I mean, I love my neighborhood, but it's going to be completely and radically changed by this project, which I will say again, is too big. I'm not against forty B, I'm not against the project, it's the size of the project. And our street is so narrow that during a rainstorm, we've got dirt in the street, so those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Any other members of the public have any other questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, one more thing that reminded me, did we ever address, I know we got rid of guest parking, and then it was brought up to just park in the street and call the cops when people park in the street, was the last thing that it was kind of left out as far as people parking, like, it is, it's a side street, so it is small as far as cars going by, having cars on the street, parked there is not going to work. And no one wants to just call the cops to say, hey, there's a car parked in the street, you know, every couple of days, that's all.
The current plan they're showing, just so you know, shows the six guest spaces there, so they'd be around that middle section?
Okay, so that's guests that park in the center.
Right on the middle island there.
So that's the current plan that they're going on?
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, back to the board.
I think we have enough information at this point.
Mr. Maroni, I don't know if you wanted to add anything extra since?
I'm here to answer questions right now.
Okay, anything else from the board? All right, seeing none.
So I guess, there's no discussion, I'd make a motion to close.
Seconded.
Okay, motion to close was made by Bob, and seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think I would, uh...
How to proceed from here?
I'd like to make a motion to have the administrator begin to draft positive approval with conditions, to be submitted to the board members for review and further discussion. The next hearing, which would be February sixth.
So that's the motion, what then?
I may not be here on February sixth, I don't know if that matters, but...
Won't be here?
Yeah.
Okay, so then that would be, since Mary's appointed, would there be four of us, if you're unavailable on the sixth?
Well, I guess the, so the main issue that we have is that we can't fit it in on the January hearing, because it's too full, the twenty-third?
Already, continuation.
And if we can discuss it on the sixth, if we need to make any changes, we can't do it at the next hearing on the twentieth, we'd actually have to meet on the thirteenth, because there's not enough time between closing the hearing, you don't have the thirty days. So I don't know if, if Ken couldn't be here on the sixth, and he was been able to do, go over all the information, and we had our discussion, could we also tend?
So we'd just be going over the draft and your discussion of the draft.
Could we, could we tentatively also schedule a final for the thirteenth? Because then if he needed to look at anything, we could straighten anything up on the thirteenth, and then we would place the thirteenth on the calendar just for this.
Thirteenth of February.
Yep, just for this one discussion. Vote.
All right, so it'll be on the thirteenth then?
Yep, so the motion would have the, the review from what's coming from the administrator on February sixth, and then a final vote on February thirteenth. Does anyone have a preference to time on the thirteenth, since it's just this one item?
I think the normal six-thirty time.
Yeah.
Okay, so six-thirty on the thirteenth.
All right.
Question regarding the two, two versus three-bedroom units, do we want to make any conditions regarding that?
I mean, I would, I, I understand the information that's come from the applicant, but I, I would like to see mixed buildings with threes and twos. And the only information I have to go by was the information from the year 2016, which is outdated. So I would probably be proposing that the building layouts be three-bedroom units with two-bedroom units. I understand that the, um...
You're saying, I'm sorry, explain that again.
That the buildings be, each building have a three and a two.
One three and one two.
Excuse me, can, I know I'm not supposed to add any testimony here, but this should have been brought up before you close the public hearing. Can I ask that you open the public hearing, so I can present something on that?
So this has been brought up before throughout the hearing.
Not that you were going to condition it?
About the units, and it's just my, it's my personal opinion, whether or not the other members have an opinion on or not. But the housing production plan, I understand that they said, you know, three-bedroom units are good, but the housing production plan's very specific, and the major lack in town is two- and one-bedroom units. And usually when they do these projects, they can do the ten percent of the threes, and usually you change the percentages on the other ones. And I just think the town going forward, uh...
It's a local concern, it's been expressed in the housing production plan. Local concerns are a valid issue in forty Bs, especially when there's existing documentation.
So I just think that's something that should be considered with the condition on the approval.
May I ask that you open the public hearing for a minute?
I don't object to having Mr. Marioni have a chance to talk about that.
All right, so we'll reopen, does that need a vote, or?
Yep.
Okay, so...
Happy to make that note.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Reopen the hearing for the purposes of discussing the three versus the two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Maroni?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I get this open again? What do I tap? Right here and then here, right there. How do I plus this thing? What do I do? How do I make this bigger? Okay, that's interesting. Try that again. Right there, yeah. Oh, here we are, up here. This is our three-bedroom floor plan. At this point, we wouldn't change, to, to make the building smaller, which would not reduce the cost of the building by anything other than a little bit of concrete and a little bit of lumber and sheet rock. We still have a kitchen, we still have appliances, we still have a bath and a half, we still have site work, we still have the fixed elements, a heating system, a septic system. So those costs are fixed, no matter what size the building is or how many bedrooms it has. To change the size of the building, even a few feet, would change the site plan, would changes the engineering, which is basically starting from scratch with the engineering, pretty much. So what we would probably do would be take a wall out between these two bedrooms, put a little wall here at the, closing off that door, and probably eliminate this closet to make one bigger bedroom, save about a thousand dollars and probably lose forty thousand on the sale price. That's the effect of a two-bedroom versus a three-bedroom in this project. So to make, as I think I was hearing, six of those bed, six of those units, two-bedroom, at the cost of about forty thousand each, is pretty uneconomical, I think. The, the, and furthermore, the Falmouth... It's stated clearly throughout the housing production plan that there's a, a larger need for homeowners in a hundred and twenty percent AMI. There's sort of an overlooked group. This, this project with our price point in the three thirty-nine, almost hits that, that family of five in the, in the hundred and twenty percent AMI perfectly. There's a large need in the town for younger home, home buyers with families, they probably wouldn't buy a two-bedroom unit, they'd buy a three. I understand the need for two, there's a place for two, there's a place for four-bedroom units, there's a place for one-bedroom units for the, for the six, twenty-five percent of households have one person in them. This project, our target market was young families, seniors that wanted to downsize, and if they don't want the third bedroom, they can use it as a, as a, a home office or whatever they want it for. But it, it just, it just doesn't make economic sense for us to go to two-bedroom units on this project. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to bring that up. And one other thing that the housing production plan states, Falmouth's unmet housing needs are not limited to what it would take to reach the ten percent level. And it did focus on needing three-bedroom units in the price point to take care of the hundred percent, hundred and twenty percent, and hundred and forty percent of AMI, which are not, you don't get credit for as affordable, but they do meet one of the needs. Thank you. I appreciate you opening the meeting for me again.
Any questions? Mary?
Yeah, I do have a question. I try to understand what you say, and in the beginning, did you say, I, I understood what you said about how you would redo the unit. But did you say that it would be forty thousand dollars in loss in the sale price?
Two-bedroom units sell for between forty and fifty thousand less than three-bedroom units do.
So then, for example, and I, I just wanted to understand it, the, the three thirty-nine would be then to three hundred?
Two, two eighty-nine to two ninety-nine, probably.
To two ninety?
Yes, two eighty-nine to two ninety-nine.
And that's for market rate?
That's for market rate. Yeah, the, the affordables would stay the same, but, well, not for two versus threes.
Yeah, what would the difference be for the four?
I'm not sure. I, I think the twos, we looked it up on another project, I think they were around, the, the threes are about two, in the two-twenty range. It fluctuates with interest rates and what our condo fee would be. The, the two bedrooms are about twenty to twenty-five thousand less, so they could be one ninety-seven, one ninety-eight.
So, I mean, I think what's motivating us is not reducing the footprint of the building, but it is exactly what you just said, it's the reduction in the price for the public, with the purpose of, of these forty Bs being to provide affordable housing. What if we just converted? What if we just converted one of your duplexes into two bedroom units?
For affordable units, you mean?
With one being affordable and one not?
I, I'd give you two affordable two bedrooms, but, uh.
I don't know if we can do that.
I don't know if you can either. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we, we could do that, I don't think so.
But that would kind of get at this issue that you were just raising about needing sort of, you know, in the market rate case. You'd be sort of in that sweet spot for your people that were a little above the median. And in your affordable unit, you'd be. Have, have a really, uh.
Why can't we just leave this alone at three bedroom units, like we're targeting our, our market and address two bedrooms on another project?
I, I, and I, and I understand where you're coming from and I see what your description is, you know, you, you also mentioned that this. Potentially could be marketed to seniors downsizing.
Well, we think those are people who'd be attracted to this price point, yes.
So it doesn't mean that you wouldn't have somebody that would be interested in the two bedroom unit with. A more open space and the information that you've given for sales data. Is so out of date that, I understand what you're saying with the pricing is, I don't know if that's what the pricing is, because your pricing goes back to the year twenty sixteen.
That, yes.
So. So that's where I'm coming from, I, I just know that, you know, when you, when you make a comment that, you know, it's nice to do this project this way and then worry about another project another way. Pretty much all the projects that we're seeing. Developers are going for what the max is, which are three bedroom units, let's just put in all three bedroom units and, you know, we understand you knew two bedrooms, but. Our decision is we don't want to deal with it, so. Just my personal opinion is, even though this is a smaller project, I think they, you should have two bedroom units that are encompassed in a project like this, I think there's a massive need for it. And I don't feel it's as much of a loss, it may not be as much of a loss as you're stating. So that's, I mean, that's just where I'm coming from, I, I just think it's important to have some two bedroom layouts. In all these projects. Versus just saying, thank you, but, you know, we've decided we're just gonna go in this one direction, so no matter what you ask, we're still gonna go in this direction and. Good luck, I, I, I just, I think a project like this in the area that it's located in. It's important to get some two bedroom units in.
Well, we, we bring that up for a couple reasons, one, we, we say that it has an economic impact, it certainly does. And secondly, is it forecloses out the family units. If, if we, if we put two bedroom units in and a young couple ends up buying the unit and they have a family and start having kids, they can't add on to these units, they have to sell it.
But we don't get the data.
You, you, you asked for the data I submitted before and I submitted that to you.
No, you, what, what happened at the last meeting and you said you thought you did and I, I missed in the file, I didn't look at it previously. So you resubmitted the same data that was in that and what I'm telling you is the data that you submitted is four years old. And it's so outdated that, and, and the two bedroom units are from twenty sixteen, the three bedroom units are from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. There, there's no, there's no continuity in the, in what's stated in here, so, so I figured that if you went back and had looked at this and. Realized that the dates were that far off, that we would get new information current. That shows this is what the new data is and this shows what the differences are and this will show what a loss is or what a sales price is. But that's not, that's not what's here. And I don't know if you just didn't look at it.
It's not what you asked for.
Yeah, but Nick, you, you do, you do real estate too, if somebody came with you and you were doing a price on a property and you handed them today and you priced it on facts from twenty sixteen.
But we know that hasn't changed, the numbers may be higher, but the, the difference hasn't changed.
I don't, I don't have. I don't have anything that shows what the percentage changes are, the sections of town affect that, the geographic areas in town affect that, it's not that difficult to get that information. I, I just don't know why it was, was never submitted. It's up to date.
It's not submitted because I'm not doing two bedroom units, you asked me to, to, to give you an answer back at a previous meeting and I did that.
I, I asked you, I asked you to see what the comparison is from the two bedrooms to three bedrooms and give us data showing what the changes were, what the market rates were. And what you submitted was something that, the same packet that was in this file in June sixteen. Just here, no update, no letter, not even saying that I looked at the information and it's, yes, it's outdated, it's extremely outdated.
Let me just explain that, you're making, you're making this look like.
No, I'm not trying to.
Let me just explain myself, please.
Look, I know you've got a hard job and I know you're doing, what I'm saying is detail wise. If I have ten minutes to look at this and I see data that's four years old. How do you expect me to use four year old data on a project that you're saying it pertains to today?
Well, it's not four years old, it may be three and a half now, it was, and some of it, as you said, was two thousand seventeen, but, but the point is that in June or, uh. Whenever the date was that you asked me for that information. We provided the information, whether it was verbally or in a submittal, did you find it in the file?
And, and I didn't ask it June and honestly, until the last meeting, I didn't see this, so I, I overlooked it.
You asked me the difference between the three bedroom and the two bedroom price point and why we weren't using twos, we gave that information, the subject didn't come up till the last meeting again. We don't, we didn't intend to do any two bedroom units, so I didn't pursue it any further, I know the cost consequences of a two. And I know what the difference in cost to build them is, a thousand dollars less to build them, substantially less to build, to, to sell them.
But what you just stated, that's what we need to see. I know it's a thousand dollars difference and this is why it is and this is the information that goes along with it, because you may know it's a thousand.
No, I'm saying the cost.
No, but just as an example, you may know the exact cost and I don't. And the only ways that I can know, know that that's the correct information is that you, you hand it to us and say, this is why. This is why it's a thousand dollars more square footage, this is why the foundation can't change, this is what the cost difference is gonna be on that. But, and, and maybe you didn't look this, or, I, maybe you, there's so much information when you look at it, but, but to have information from.
It just came up.
This long ago and to look at me and say that the information from twenty sixteen completely pertains to twenty twenty? It, it just doesn't make any sense. It just doesn't make any sense, fo- four years have gone by, it just doesn't make any sense. And it may, you could pertain, but I don't have anything that says that.
It also doesn't make any sense that we try to submit a project with three bedroom units and you all of a sudden want to change them to twos, because. You, you say something in the housing production plan says there's a need, we say there's a need for the threes also.
But we've continually said there was a need. And you don't have to agree with me at all.
I agree with you, there's a need.
I continually said there's a need for a two bedroom and I have yet to see somebody say, we're willing to meet the need. The neighbors have commented in, in this case of traffic issues, now you know we can't do a lot with traffic studies. And it's a small road and I'd love to do it, we just can't. But also, when you're taking three bedrooms and two bedroom units and now the occupancy changes, that does change the traffic flow. That does put.
But according to the traffic study, it doesn't.
A two bedroom unit versus a three bedroom unit can make a difference on the traffic flow. And, and it's, again, the, the other board members, they may not even agree with me, but my personal opinion is you need to have two bedroom units in these projects. And if somebody is not willing to consider that at all. My opinion is, I think they should be staggered throughout the complex, I, I, I may get outvoted, it may not make a difference, but. I, I just think it's really important, I think the town went through all this process to study. And it's very easy to pick little sentences here and here out of the production plan, says, well, I know it says that, but there's a sentence over here, so I'm gonna use that one. I think it's very important that the town start dealing with these two bedroom units that show a need for the area. And. I could get a project like this to work with threes and twos, but I'm not doing the project, you're doing the project. If I want to develop a project and I want to have some mixed uses, I'm sure there's ways to change, foundation size, this and that, cut costs in different areas. I, I just, I'd like to see, I, I'd like to see some two bedroom units in the plan. And, and I've never changed from that, I've always wanted to see two bedroom units in the plan.
And I agree, there's a need for two bedroom units and you're gonna see some two bedroom units in projects, you're probably not gonna like them, but you're gonna see some and. And. This, this one economically needs the three bedroom units.
I, I have a question, when, um. When there's a letter that comes from, when you get approval at the state and then there's a letter that comes from the town. That goes to the state, did they mention in that letter that they were looking for two bedroom units?
Yes, they, I think that was one of their comments, yes, that, that and several other things.
So, even the town told you that that was what they were looking for?
It said they would like to see some two bedroom units in it.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, I, I can understand if you say, well, you know, if you make me put in six two bedrooms, that, that's too much, I can't afford it, but. You said you could, you could do two. Two bedroom units, you'd like them to be the affordable units, what if one of them was affordable and one of them was market rate, that at least gets us some two bedroom units in the project.
I would like not to do that, but if that were a condition, it's, I'd have to decide how I feel about it, run, run my numbers and decide how I feel about it, it's. It's certainly, if one of them's affordable and one is market.
Then we have one, one building that perhaps is.
It's, it's less impact than six, uh, affordable, six two bedrooms.
And I think that still would comply with the.
It would comply.
Spirit of.
And you could, as a mar- as a marketed two bedroom unit, you can market that towards the senior that wants to downsize or some of the, they don't need the three bedrooms, they can do with a two, with an office or study space.
I'm a senior and I was, and I'm looking to downsize, I'd be looking for the third bedroom to make an office out of it or storage.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, so you don't need the, the space, yeah, make it an office or storage.
So why not just leave it the way it is?
Well, the, the, the issue, Ed, is, is the price of the bill, of the condo, that, that's the issue, it's not the space.
Yeah.
You know, we're trying, if we can make an affordable unit available for someone under two hundred thousand, that's meaningful.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, that's the goal of these forty Bs is to produce affordable housing.
You know, I also, and, and just along these lines, heard people bringing up statistics about your, your, um. Marketing to families, young families, I suppose, would be even better, but anyway, families, so. They talk about how much debt young families have already if they've gone to college and other things, just, just normally. So even in the case of three bedrooms or, or marketing to families, that's something to consider.
Their college debt?
Huge college debts, huge, huge debts, period.
What, what would you suggest I do about that?
And a feeling that you are never going to be able to do anything more than rent, th- these are the new housing statistics coming out. I just mention it because the cost and, and what, reiterating Ken's point.
So what I hear Mr. Marioni saying is he, he could perhaps tolerate. Converting one of these duplexes into a two bedroom.
I think that's a huge plus.
Pair of duplexes.
Alright, I guess my only concern is, I'm not sure if that, if one building of two bedrooms, if that's really, if that, how that's gonna comply with the state or not.
So my feeling was if one of the units in that building is market rate and one is affordable, then there's no difference, no distinguished, you know.
Right.
In that, and it's a mixed development in terms of three and two bedrooms. I don't think you have to have every single.
And if he's not changing the foundations and he's gonna go with that with the wall change. You could put a three and one and a two and a, you know, you could have a three and a two and a three and a two and then the other ones would all be threes.
You might end up, you know, and again, this is up to him, but you might end up designing one of the, one of the units to be a little small. Which could save something.
Cost you more drawings to do it over again.
I don't know.
Better off keeping them all the same. On the outside.
But. It's, it's, really goes to the issue of providing inexpensive housing, that's, that's the goal.
So, motion to reclose?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, motion to close once again, made by Bob and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, and.
Still stick with the other one with the same dates and everything, so. Correct?
If you could just say it again, Bob, I'm sorry.
So, so February sixth will still be the date for our review. And then we'll be setting up a final vote on the thirteenth.
Right.
At the same time, six thirty.
Alright, and is there a second?
Second.
Alright, so the motion was made by Bob and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So it's contin- Noreen, the sixth?
So February, February sixth.
February sixth, six thirty.
And then the final vote will be on the thirteenth.
Thank you. So, the sixth, we're gonna?
Sixth, we're gonna review everything and discuss it and then the final vote on the thirteenth.
Thank you. Alright, and we have our last hearing of the night, application seventy-two dash nineteen, Mullen, four ten Surf Drive in Falmouth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to raise a point of order on this.
Sure.
And, um. I have read the file and all of the documents.
I just swallowed that damn thing whole.
And it's for a modification of a special permit, that one oh six ninety-one. Which was issued November twentieth nineteen ninety-one and. I, I guess I don't understand how we can even entertain a modification of this particular permit.
I'd be happy to address that in my presentation.
So what, I open? I mean kidding?
Well, I brought up a point of order on that.
So how does that work?
We'd have to consider it, the chairman would consider it before opening, I would.
I would have suggested that you just proceed with your, um. Items in the file and then discuss it as part of the body, I mean, it's up to you, but that would be.
I would think that'd be, have we ever?
I think we, we are entering, uh, uncharted territory, I'll say with Mary's, uh, point of order.
So, so point of order addresses. So something to do with parliamentary procedure in the meeting, I, I think this is more substantive, you're, you're really asking. Question that goes to the heart of what the attorney is gonna present, which is. Can we? Can they reopen this thing or do they have any grounds to ask for what they're asking for? But it doesn't pertain to how we're operating the meeting, I don't think.
Yeah, I think it would just be, be probably what you would cover within the body anyway, so, but certainly that's a point that you, you know, would be under discussion.
Alright, um.
I think I'd like to hear the discussion, we could always, if we agree, say sorry, you don't get the special permit because of all.
Right, but usually you would open the hearing anyway.
Yes, that's what, I guess, that's what I was trying to say.
Alright, so, uh, with Mary's concern, I think it's appropriate to open the hearing and, uh.
Then discuss it.
And, and then discuss the issue, I think the applicant can certainly anticipate your concern. And, uh, if necessary, we can have a discussion about it prior, prior to rendering any sort of decision.
Alright, so I'll open the hearing, so application number seventy-two dash nineteen, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General laws. You are hereby notified that John T. Mullen of Beverly, Mass, has. you are hereby notified that John T. Mullen of Beverly, Mass, has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a modification of an existing special permit, one oh six dash ninety-one pursuant to sections two forty dash three C, two forty dash sixty-nine E, and two forty dash one fifty-nine of the Code of Falmouth to allow an elevated bathhouse on existing pilings. The subject property is four ten Surf Drive. For referrals. Okay, this is Concom's comments as of November eighteenth twenty nineteen. The project is currently before the Conservation Commission. The Conservation staff concerns include alteration to coastal dune by the installation of a tight tank for septic purposes and the placement of the tight tank in a velocity zone. The original house, prior to Hurricane Bob, had indoor plumbing to accommodate gray water only. Bathroom sink, kitchen sink, and outdoor shower only. There was no discharge of black water sewage into the cesspool. The applicant stated at the conservation hearing, there will be no parking on site. Conservation staff has concerns that the parking will be located under the structure, the only place to accommodate parking, and that will alter coastal dune, and that will alter coastal dune the applicant proposes to restore. The applicant stated the Conservation Commission could place a condition that no parking be allowed on site. Conservation staff regards this suggestion as unrealistic and unenforceable. The applicant stated at the conservation hearing, they could park across the street on town-owned land. The applica- the applicant states that this is a reconstruction of a partially constructed cabana. Only pilings and horizontal structure members have been in place since nineteen ninety-one slash ninety-two. The Conservation Staff does not consider existing pilings to be a partially constructed cabana. Conservation Staff is concerned with the impacts to coastal dune in Barrier Beach. The coastal dune will not function with a tight tank buried within it. Uh, engineering. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Surf Drive is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed in the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters of rights of way. The architectural plans show a vehicle parked under the structure. There is no existing driveway apron on the site and there doesn't appear to be one proposed. Please confirm that there will be no onsite parking on this lot. If there will be onsite parking, then we request the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the Engineering Division prior to closing the hearing for this special permit, or that the board include the following condition if the special permit is approved. Quote, "The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit," closed quote. We recommend that the board require the applicant to meet the attached soil erosion and sediment control standards. A limit of work is shown on the plan. It isn't clear how this limit will be demarcated. We recommend that information on how this will be demarcated in the field be provided. Will it be a wattle line or a hay bale silt fence? What equipment will be used to remove the existing pilings and cross bracing? What equipment will be used to install the new columns and beams? What equipment will be used to excavate for the tight tank? Given the height of this construction, we assume lifts will be required to get materials up to the building level for construction. These activities will likely require a vehicle accessing the building envelope. A construction entrance should be required for any vehicle access to this site during construction. Where will materials for construction be stored for the project? Materials should be stored on-site or at an arranged off-site location. We recommend that the board set a condition that materials shall be stored on the adjacent, shall not be stored on the adjacent town parcel or the town parcel on the opposite side of Surf Drive. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, rain garden, or stormwater measures for the new roof area. We also recommend the following condition for any approval, and that refers to section ninety-nine one on house numbering. And they have attached to that the packet regarding soil erosion and sediment control standards. Fire Department has no comment. Assessors says includes lot twenty-six. Planning Board has no comment. Health. On September ninth twenty nineteen, the Falmouth Board of Health granted an approval for a tight tank to be installed on the property. And uh, that's all the comments so far, and I, I'm not sure, but I think they might be in front of Conservation.
Correct. And Conservation has taken the position that they're not going to issue their decision until the board, this board uh comes to determination about the necessity of parking. Okay, so we've written into the record?
All in.
All right, for the applicant.
Promise this is the last time you have to see me tonight. Uh, again, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicant, John Mullen, who is the prospective buyer of this property at four ten Surf Drive. This is a unique application. This is a different application than we typically see. So I do wanna walk through it and explain what's happening and why we believe this is allowed. The applicant is seeking to modify the existing special permit, which allows for the reconstruction of the bathhouse on the undersized beach lot. This property, four ten Surf Drive, is located between Surf Drive and Vineyard Sound at the end of that stretch of land that has the elevated bathhouses. This is abutted to the west by the inlet salt pond. Uh, and the history of the site is really relevant to the application. A bathhouse existed here from nineteen, approximately nineteen forty-five until nineteen ninety-one, when it was damaged substantially by Hurricane Bob. Immediately following that damage, the owner obtained a special permit from zoning board of appeals in order to reconstruct the bathhouse, but that bathhouse, that reconstructed bathhouse would need to be elevated to meet the flood standards. The owner then obtained a building permit, demoed the remaining structure, demoed the concrete pad, and commenced construction by installing the pilings for the elevated structure, essentially the foundation for the structure. It was not completed for various familial reasons. The nineteen ninety-one special permit does not set forth a timeline for the completion of construction. Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-eight, section nine, does state that a special permit will lapse after two years unless substantial use is commenced or, in the case of a construction, if construction has not begun. The statute does not require completion of construction. It just requires that it begins. The prior approved decision allowed for the construction on elevated appears, as I mentioned, in order to comply with those flood zone standards. Since that time, there's been a subsequent change to the flood zone requirements. You could not construct it at the height that was permitted in nineteen ninety-one. It needs to be elevated. So the applicant has come forth with altered plans to meet those requirements. The revised plans, though, are in the same footprint as the original bathhouse and the permitted plans. The section allowing a bathhouse on an undersized lot is a little used, certainly in recent years, so it's worth reviewing. Section two forty, one fifty-nine states that a special permit may be granted for bathhouses on beach or shore lots of small lot area not conforming with Article fourteen. But no bathhouse erected on any such lot should be permitted to be used as a habitation, and there shall be a side yard not less than five feet in clear width between the side of any house erected thereon and the sideline of said lot. Said side yards to be at all points clear from the front to the rear line of said house. The modified plans have been, uh, the, the new plans have been modified to raise the structure to comply with the new standards. The plans, as proposed, are not substantially more detrimental than the plans that were approved. They changed the height, but the footprint remains the same. So this is to say that the special permit was exercised. It was exercised by obtaining the building permit, by doing the demolition, and by beginning the construction. It is not required that the construction be completed, but it has been relied upon, which is a, a substantial use of that special permit. And because there's no timeframe for the completion of the construction within the terms of that special permit, it has not lapsed. I am aware that there's a question relative to parking on the site. The nineteen ninety-one plan and permit did not provide for parking on the site. In fact, there was a fence across the length and the frontage of the lot. And if you look at this plan, you'll see the small X's along the front denoting the existing board fence to be rebuilt that goes across the entire front of the lot. So there was no parking in that nineteen ninety-one special permit. Again, we're only changing the height and the design of the structure, not the use. The use and intensity, intensity of use of the structure remains the same. Two forty, one oh five, section two forty, section, uh, chapter two forty, section one oh five, states that off-street parking must be provided to ser- to service the net increase in parking demand created by new constructions, additions, or changes of use. However, buildings, structures, and land uses in existence as of April second nineteen seventy-nine are not subject to these requirements so long as they are not enlarged or changed to increase their parking needs. This bathhouse was built in nineteen forty-five and existed through ni- that ni- April second nineteen seventy-nine period until nineteen ninety-one. It was present as of that demarcation time. It doesn't say continuous. It just says as of April second nineteen seventy-nine. The proposed modification does not increase the parking demand over what was previously approved and relied upon. There are a few factors worth noting. There's public parking directly across the street. The applicant also owns a home half mile, mile away on Bywater Court, and there's no overnight use allowed of this, uh, uh, allowed on this site. So given the intended use, given the fact that it's a modification of a special permit that didn't require parking, and the other reasons I just mentioned, I don't believe that the proposal constitutes net increase and no onsite parking should be required, whereas it was not in the nineteen ninety-one decision. As was mentioned, a tight tank has been approved to replace the existing cesspool at the site. Looking holistically, this is an unusual and a unique application. But I think it appears perhaps more complicated or confusing than it really is. On its merits, it's no different than a standard two forty, three C application. But for comparing the proposed plans against what's on the ground, we're comparing the compo- proposed plans against what was permitted and relied upon in that special permit. Looking at it in that sense, there are no detriments to this proposed project relative to the previously approved plans. I think this board can issue a special, a modification of this. I think that modification is not substantially more detrimental. And I'd be happy to address any questions that the board has at this time.
Thank you. Mary, would you like to start us off?
No, I think I'll pass.
Bob?
Okay, ju- so, uh, just for clarification. So you just mentioned that there is public parking across the street.
There is.
So, it's my understanding that that's not actually a public parking lot. So do you have anything to show that that is for public parking?
I have a photograph of it that shows people parking there.
So, so just that people have parked there?
I, I think it, whether or not it's a, it is designated as a public parking municipal lot. I, I don't, I don't suspect it's designated as a municipal lot. I think the active use that, of that parcel of land has been, for as long as I can remember, public parking.
I, I'm only asking because you said it, there is a public parking lot across the street.
There was, there was, there's parking areas nearby.
On the original special permit, on the height of the pillars that are there.
Mm-hmm.
Are those the height that were in the permit? The reason I ask is because the original permit is very concerned that the structure be at ground level the way it was in the past, and if it was not, they required administrative approval.
So, looking at this special permit, there with me for a second here. The, the by, the special permit states that, uh, the bylaw requires any newer substantially improved structure to comply with the flood plan requirements of elevating the structure to or above base flood elevation. The building commissioner determined that section forty-four hundred, which is that section I just mentioned, is applicable in this case as the restoration will constitute substantial improvement as defined in the zoning bylaw. He indicated that the proposed new foundation must meet the requirements for new construction. It's the opinion of this board that the intent to require elevating structures was intended to apply to habitable structures.
It, it's right at the end. It was just a.
So.
The only thing they ask is because it seemed like they based a lot on that it, what, what would reappear is what was there originally, even for elevation.
Sure. So it wa- it was built in the same footprint, um, and, and I believe the pilings as built are the pilings that were proposed in the plans for, um, I only.
I didn't see those, so maybe if it's supposed to.
So there, it, it has been submitted to the file. I don't have it as part of the presentation. But there are, there is a building plan for the, uh, in, in the file. It was part of the nineteen ninety-one special permit.
Now, now, since that original special permit, because there has pretty much been no use for twenty-eight years, why wouldn't this, the use be abandoned?
Uh, abandonment refers to non-conforming uses. There was a special permit that was issued and the, there has been reliance on it. Although, again, all that requires for the special permit is, is that there be reliance on it and construction begin.
So if you started a property in town, no matter where it was, and you had a special permit, and you started something as minor as just putting a couple pillars in the ground and then never touched it again for twenty-eight years, you feel that would be allowed to get a modification on the original permit that was never continued or followed through at any time?
I think that if the, I think that if the flood zone elevations had not changed, we wouldn't even need a modification. We could get a building permit for this today.
So eve- even though construction started, stopped, the special permit would have run out?
But the special permit doesn't run out because construction was begun. The, if, absent language.
But isn't it usually, doesn't construction have to begin but then have some kind of continual change?
Not, not that I'm aware of. The, the.
So we've given permits on other properties before, and I don't know if you argued them or not. We've had cases where a property was started and then they want to modify or extend the permit.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the issues that it usually comes up is, but there hasn't been any substantial change.
There hasn't been any substantial reliance is usually the question. The question is usually, has there been reliance on it? In this case, there was reliance on it. And I think that to refer to the installation of the pilings as something minor, it's no different than putting in a foundation on a house. If this was, if this was on the ground, they would have put in a foundation. It wasn't on the ground, so they put in pilings.
And if they built in this structure today, would these pilings be used or would you have to pick them up?
No, these pilings, these pilings will be replaced because they will, they have to go higher.
And what is your argument again regarding parking? Let's say there isn't parking across the street.
The.
Something in the file by one of the other departments, that they couldn't park there.
I, I don't think you can, but I wasn't gonna make that. But if you can't, let's just assume you couldn't. How would you handle parking?
Sure. You could get dropped off there. You could ride a bike there. You could do any number of things. Take an Uber.
So, the, you're, the building commissioner's opinion was that it would require two parking spaces?
I've since met with Mr. Palmer and discussed the, uh, exigent circumstances, including the, uh, existing special permit, the, uh, no parking being required previously in the application of section two forty, one oh five. He seemed receptive to it. I submitted correspondence to ask him to, uh, weigh in. He has not as of yet. I spoke with him today. Um, he simply said, given the holidays, he hadn't had a chance to review it, um, but he would. Because I think the, the question that was presented to him was, would a bathhouse of this nature require parking? Which I think in the abstract, the answer is probably yes. But given the circumstances at hand, I think the answer is no.
So right now, but the only, so the only decision we have right now is that, is that he is suggesting it would require two parking spaces?
Mm-hmm. But I, I did, and again, I submitted information to the file, uh, as to why the zoning bylaw says you don't necessarily need, require parking.
And one of the arguments there was that if the, um, if the new purchaser, because they live in the vicinity,
Mm-hmm.
could park on that home. The only issue that I find with that is that because properties can be transferred out of an issue,
Sure.
it would be very hard to condition.
That was one of, one of a few factors as to why parking isn't as necessary as it otherwise may be.
That's, that's all I have right now.
Yep, might be more, but a moment, I'm trying to digest this letter here.
Sure. Ken?
So your, the crux of your argument seems to me is that because, that at the time the special permit was issued, this was conforming use?
Well, it was an existing use. It was, it was, um, it, I haven't found a special permit relative to the construction of the bathhouse. Um, I've checked the bylaw going back. We have, we have copies of the bylaw at my office, uh, basically dating back to nineteen twenty-seven, but we have a gap from nineteen twenty-seven to nineteen forty-seven. And I don't know whether or not in, uh, it, the bathhouse was not in the nineteen twenty-seven zoning bylaw. It wasn't in nineteen forty-seven. I don't know if in the intervening time it required a special permit or not. Um, but the building was, was built in nineteen forty-five, thereabouts, based on assessors' records. records and aerial photographs. So the, at the time, they were replacing the structure that had been damaged in Hurricane Bob in nineteen ninety-one.
I understand that. Was it a conforming use at that time?
Well, there's a, there is a provision in the bylaw that allows for this. Currently, it requires a special permit, but they had no issue with issuing a, a special... They, they had no concerns with issuing, seemingly had no concerns with issuing the special permit in nineteen ninety-one, given its use.
You know, the, the, the part that I struggle with is any non-conforming use that has been abandoned or not used for more than two years loses protection.
Sure, but with the issuance of a special permit, it's not a non-conforming use. And there was a special permit that was issued in nineteen ninety-one. It's a permitted use, it's a special permitted use, but it's still a permitted use.
And then has the building commissioner made it, has anyone made a determination as to whether, officially as to whether they construed that construction did begin?
I think the, the pilings have been installed and there were two building permits.
Didn't ask that, I want to know.
There were two, there were two building permits issued, one in nineteen ninety-two and one in nineteen ninety-seven.
What's the building commissioner's determination?
He hasn't weighed in on, on that, to that effect that I'm aware of.
Anything else, Ken?
I guess that's it for the moment.
All right, Jerry?
Just go back, I think, did Concom say that the tight tank would ruin the use of the dune or that it'd have to be restored?
That was the November referral. There's been two hearings since that time. And we brought in a specialist that refuted that and, and gave them evidence as to why the installation of the tight tank would not compromise the dune. I mean, even if this board does approve this, we still need to be approved by Conservation.
No, no, I just trying, I thought, maybe I, I misunderstood.
But there's been, there's been quite a bit of development at Conservation Commission since that November referral came over.
So there's no permission to pack across the street, but there's no denial if people use it?
Correct.
How would, if, I know Concom said no parking could not be enforced. How would you, what would you recommend to ensure there's no parking on the property? Bollards?
I think it's a little disingenuous for Concom to say that the, a condition can't be enforced, because if that's the case, any condition, I mean, what, what's the difference between that and any condition in a Conservation Commission order?
I always state the question, it takes time necessarily to enforce things.
Sure.
How would you make sure that this is not flag, I mean, people are going to want to park there unless you put stone, some type of barrier, people are going to park there.
I think that would need to be addressed through Conservation Commission because anything we put on the site would be within their jurisdiction. So I don't think bollards would be allowed, for instance, but I, I don't know that. We'd have to work that through with Conservation. If, so if this board came to the determination that parking is not required, we could work with Conservation to find a way of preventing it. Whether it be snow fencing, whether it be dune fencing, something that wouldn't impede movement of resource areas. I'm just thinking of, of, you know, permanent structures tend to be something they frown upon as much as possible, certainly within the velocity, velocity zone there. So I think that through Conservation, we could come up with some mechanism of blocking it. There was, as I said, an existing board fence that was to be rebuilt in nineteen ninety-one. I'm sure that we could come up with something, again, if this board were to find that parking was not required, we would have to work that through with Conservation and that, so that they were satisfied with it as well.
I guess I'd like to, to see granted on Concom, but...
But they want you to grant first.
Well, it's all right, I respect them. But you know, snow fencing doesn't stop anybody. I mean, and I understand what you're saying, that, that it's going to be difficult to put anything there that they would approve, so it's a catch twenty-two.
I just have a clarification through the chair, just to Jerry, because it, just to understand, are you talking about snow fencing on this side or on the other side of the street?
I was referring to this side, I'm not sure what Jerry was referring to.
No, no, I just want to make sure I was...
Which side is this side?
Our side, our side.
Yes, yeah, that's what I thought, on, on the property.
Yeah, we're not, we're not proposing to put anything on property that's not ours.
Except visiting cats, excuse me. I, it's a good point, you raise a good point.
And, and that's also a good point. The, the revised, the revised plans that were submitted, there have been, there's no, there's no, no availability of parking underneath either, because that area has been blocked off. And, and the stairs now come underneath, so there'd be, there'd be no opportunity to put a car underneath there, which is, which is the only spot.
I missed that if that was in the plans.
These were the revised plans that were submitted through Concom, and we submitted them to the board a week, a week and a half ago.
So there's a physical barrier?
There was a physical barrier underneath the house itself, which, which Concom felt was the only place that one would park.
Anything else, Jerry?
No.
I have a few questions too. So you're equating the pilings, essentially you're calling it a foundation? So, in your opinion, do the pilings qualify as a structure?
Sure. Certainly part of a structure, it's a fixed point on the ground, there's a definition of structure. Anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires fixed location on the ground or attachment to something located on the ground.
So since there is a tight tank proposed, can you talk about, or what's proposed within the structure in terms of sanitary uses, sinks, toilets?
There's, there's, there's a toilet, there is, um... Kitchenette, yeah.
Shower?
Yep.
Inside?
Yes, there's a, there's a bathroom inside.
How about a...
No bedroom inside.
Rent station, I think, is, is the term, is that outside at all?
I thought a bathroom is not...
I don't think, I don't think Conservation allows the rent station, certainly in this location.
Uh, I think that does it for me for...
I had a, I should know, my mind's going again. A toilet is, toilet wastewater is not considered black water.
It's a tight tank, previously was a cesspool.
Okay, okay, that's where I missed on it, okay. So it is, so it is black water going to tight tank? I got you.
This side, Mary?
Yeah, so I look at section two forty dash two two one, lapse. A special permit granted under this article shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced. Do you want me to go on?
Or in the case of a permit for construction, if the construction has not begun by such date.
Except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if the construction has not begun by such date except for good cause.
Then it was begun.
The determination of good cause shall be made by the special permit granting authority.
But the construction was begun. If the construct, if, if no, if no pilings had been installed, I think you're absolutely correct. But because the pilings were installed, because there was building permits issued, because there was demolition done, because the pilings were installed, which is no different than the installation of a foundation on, on a home that's at, at base elevation, construction did begin.
It says or. So you're saying that, that a substantial use did not occur?
It says or, meaning either or, not both.
Are you saying that a substantial use did not occur?
No, it didn't, because in this case, it says in the case of construction, if construction has not begun.
So was there a building permit?
Yes.
So a building permit was issued?
Yes.
So it began, how long did that building permit go for?
Building permits lapse after six months if they're not relied upon.
So it wasn't relied upon?
Yes, because, because construction was begun, because the foundation, the pilings were installed. If this was on the ground and we were talking about a foundation versus pilings, I don't think anyone would dispute whether or not construction had begun. This is in no way different.
But if you had a foundation that went in, and then that foundation stayed there with no other change, twenty-eight years? You're saying that you could still modify that permit?
Yes.
Do you have any examples throughout the town where something, where something has gone that long, with no change but one item like that, and then the permit's been modified?
The Cape Codder Hotel was a phased project, where some of the phases were done, and then ten years later, the next phase went to be done. And it was subject of a...
But it, but it was...
Was it being used during that ten-year period?
Not the unfazed portion, not the...
What about the part that was built?
Sure.
So it was used?
What was the use of this structure during the period after construction commenced?
Pilings. A piling's a piling, whether or not there's something on top of it.
What was the purpose of building this bathhouse?
I, I think the point of it had been to complete the construction, but the construction wasn't...
And then what would the use have been?
A bathhouse.
That's what I'm asking.
A bathhouse.
So was it used as a bathhouse during the twenty-eight year period?
But it doesn't need to be.
And what was the use of the bathhouse? I mean, what was the, the building permit was to build a bathhouse? But there was no building, there was no construction of a bathhouse, it was construction of piling.
So, but I, I think that's inaccurate, because if you, if you, if I get a foundation to build a duplex, and I put in a foundation for a duplex, but I don't build the duplex, I just leave the foundation, it doesn't, it, it, the, the, the point of the foundation doesn't change.
Substantial use that...
Sure it does, you could build a lot of things with a foundation.
If you had the per, if you had the permit to do so, and the permit, the special permit and the building permit were for a bathhouse. All that is required by Mass General Laws or, and by the building, by the zoning code, is that construction begin. There's no reference to completion of construction in either the zoning bylaw or Mass General Laws.
So...
Do we need a legal opinion?
With this, we, we have one. With this special permit that was issued, do you have proof that it was recorded at the registry?
I found it at the registry.
So there's proof that it was recorded at the registry?
Recorded at the registry, so it's...
Okay, because we did not find proof that it was recorded at the registry?
I have a copy of it here, which has the book and page at the top.
Okay. And then you, you have advice from Town Council regarding this case?
Regarding, okay, so I'll have to go back and, but we can't share it with him now.
Well, no, you would have to vote to do so, but hopefully you read that material.
If we read it, I forgot it, but I'd probably still vote to share it with him.
There's another, another copy delivered.
Oh, I took my copy.
Counsel, have there been any stop, quick changes to the zoning bylaws?
But you can look at it.
Is project essentially unfeasible or impermitted?
Not that I'm aware of.
Have there been any, were there any stop work orders from the building commissioner between nineteen ninety-one and now regarding this?
Not that I'm aware of.
A few minutes ago, you mentioned that there was another permit issued in ninety-seven? What was that for?
Same thing. Bathhouse.
Why did they do, what, what was the difference between ninety-one and ninety-seven?
The, the, the permit needs to be renewed, the building permit itself needs to be renewed, but the special permit was relied upon. So there was no modification of the special permit in nineteen ninety-seven because it was still valid, much as it is today.
So what was the reason that they stopped construction and they waited six years, then got another building permit and then never built again?
I don't, I don't know. Mr. Mullins not, it's owned by, by, by...
No, I know, I just didn't know, I just didn't know if you, because you know, they...
All I've been told was there were family reasons, yeah.
They got a new one in ninety-seven, they then again didn't build again in ninety-seven. It, it just seems crazy you've got those pilings there. I mean, are the pilings even allowed to just stay there?
Pilings are not a bathhouse, and that's what was, was given permission to build was a bathhouse. So construction of a bathhouse did not begin.
That's, I mean, that, but that's, you need to put the foundation in before you can build the bathhouse.
So it's abandonment of the...
But it's not abandonment, because abandonment refers to non-conforming uses, and this is a permitted use.
Two-part question though, Counsel. You did testify though that the current pilings are not in compliance with the current, the flood zone?
The flood zone has changed.
Okay, so how do you, how would you apply two forty-four then, that basically requires changes?
Two forty, section four.
Two forty, section four. Construction or operation under a building permit or special permit must conform to any subsequent amendments to this chapter unless the use or construction has commenced within a period of twelve months after the issuance of the permit in cases involving construction unless such construction is continued through to completion continuously.
Well, we're not, we're not trying to build it at the current height, we're trying to build it at a conforming height. That's what the modified plans are.
Aren't you going to be required to come up to the...
That's what the modified plans are, to, to bring it to a conforming floodzone elevation.
I would maintain that that is not a modification of, of it. That is a new proposal.
The only thing that's changed is the height of the structure, essentially. The design of the building has changed, but...
So, so the design has changed, the height has changed, the pilings have to be removed, the new pilings have to be put in, so, I mean, quite honestly, it's a new structure.
It's a new structure.
But it's the same special permit.
But it really has nothing to do with the original structure.
Has everything to do with the original structure, same, same way that, you know, you have a razon rebuild of a, of a dwelling. It's still, we're still modifying the same special permit. We're not trying to build the structure that was permanent, but we kept it to the same parameters. We kept it to the same parameters that was approved, we're not expanding the footprint.
I just don't see how you could modify it.
Therefore, it's not a modification, I would maintain.
But it is a modification. If I have a special permit to build a single-family house and I change the house, it's still a modification, it's not a brand-new special permit.
Could I, one, people may not agree with me, but I think we should vote to release Irish comments to the attorneys who...
I would appreciate it.
Well, I mean, the board has to, you know, they may not agree with me, but we're going back and forth on some legal things. That would be my first request, and I put in a motion that we authorize the release in this case of the letter, I guess we received it today.
Well, I would argue that it isn't, it isn't even necessary because it's not, we, we are, what's before us is a modification of a special permit. And this, we have talked about it.
I'm just scratching my back.
The special permit is to build and construct a bathhouse.
Okay, I, I...
And that has not occurred. And I read what was in there in our, our bylaws, and my reading of it is that it doesn't fit.
I still think out of, especially in this case, that there is no harm in authorizing the board to release this permit. We can still vote to deny it if you want, if the board wants, but I think we should give him time to look at it, we just got it today. I thought it said January nine, I missed it, if it was before.
January nine.
January nine, what's Thursday? Okay, so we got it today. So I, I mean, I'm not that comfortable with reading that. I also, based on my experience, would say you can't build a house without a foundation, and I find his argument that the pilings are the start of building something, so that it's unique.
I, I don't completely...
But construction hasn't begun, is the point.
Okay, let's back...
I read what was in the bylaw.
I, I have a motion that we release the...
Let's hold off on discussion right now.
Yeah, but, well, hold on a second. There is one, you know, Mary brought up a very interesting point with two forty-two, two two one, because that's a, you know, this is a two-part sentence. The first part, "A special permit granted under this article shall lapse in three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not commenced." I don't think it was ever used as a bathhouse.
Or, but the, the next word is or.
Yeah, or, "In the case of a permit for construction," has nothing to do with the special permit.
But the, but the special permit allowed the reconstruction of the house, it allowed the, the house to be elevated.
But we're discussing the permit, the special permit.
The special permit...
We're not discussing the construction.
That's the construction permit is the or, the second part of that sentence.
No, 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 the special permit refers to the construction, it's not a building permit for construction, it's a special permit for construction.
It doesn't say that. It says, "Or in the case of a permit for construction."
That would not be a zoning bylaw question, that would be...
It's what, I'm just saying what's, I'm giving you the text.
It, it parrots, it parrots the language of chapter two four, of chapter forty-eight, section nine. And that clearly, I mean, it's, it's the section of the, of the, of chapter forty-eight that, you know, it's, chapter forty refers to special permits and variances, not building permits. It's, it is clear that the, what's intended here is a special permit for construction, not, not a building permit for construction. It says or, or, for, in the case of a permit for construction, meaning it's not dispositive, it needs to be one or the other, it need not be both.
Absolutely, but the second part of it didn't get fulfilled either, which is the...
Of course, putting in...
But wait a minute, let me just finish. Was the part for the construction was for a bathhouse. The bathhouse did not get constructed.
The plans for the bathhouse included pilings, you cannot build the bathhouse without pilings.
That's fine, but the bathhouse, the construction of the bathhouse did not begin.
You couldn't.
If they had put in a floor or, or something for that to be a bathhouse, that would have been under the definition of construction.
There's nothing else that's allowed on this site other than a bathhouse, given the size.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
But it wasn't begun, substantial ones.
I have a motion on the floor.
It clearly was.
Is it seconded, that we should release this to the attorney? Ari's letter.
Town Council's opinion?
Town Council's opinion. I mean, I think, uh, we're not going to resolve this tonight one way or the other, I don't think. I think in the past, we've allowed things to make sure we have it right. I'd also, considering this conversation, we should ask for an interpretation of that paragraph, because I would, I would allege that if you started the bathhouse by needing to put in the pilings, that you started construction. And maybe this was poorly worded and I don't care, I don't know, I guess I don't care which way it goes, but maybe we need a legal opinion on this paragraph and what or is, as it relates to this. I mean, we have at least one legal opinion he hasn't seen, we may have another potential opinion that we're, another issue we should get a legal opinion on. And what does it, well.
For, for whatever it's worth, I would appreciate a chance to, to know what the opinion says if I have to argue against it essentially.
So other, other than the pilings, let's say that wasn't even an issue here. We have a decision in the file from the Building Commissioner. It says, "If he gives a permit for this, he will require two parking spaces."
That's under review?
No, that's from the Building Commissioner.
I'm talking about what the attorney just said.
But from what we've received, the Building Commissioner hasn't told us it's under review, he's given us an actual decision.
Okay, come on now, we're, we're splitting here.
No, no, no.
We come back, we've come back and forth with, and now, wait a minute, I've got the floor.
No, no.
The applicant is said, the applicant.
To be quite honest, you don't have the floor, so, let me finish. So, I'm not discussing the attorney stuff, I'm discussing, we have a separate issue here. We have a decision that the Building Commissioner has made and sent to us and said, "It is my opinion, period, that if a permit is given for this structure, I will require two parking spaces." If you can get me by the two parking spaces section.
That I think.
I could say maybe we, we continue more, but right now, I don't know where you could do any parking.
So I think that that question can be resolved upon a continuance. I would ask that, uh, you know, no matter what, we're not getting a decision tonight.
Well, we could.
No matter what, we're not getting a decision tonight.
That you like. Well, I, I, I could support a continuance.
But, you know, I'd rather, but I'd like to continue our conversation to find out what else we need to resolve.
Yes.
Um, because again, I have met with Mr. Palmer, and I'm happy to, you know, to, to seek a, a further review. And if he, if he decides that it does require parking, then so be it, that's his determination, and that's something we would have to overcome if that was the case.
If he did, let's just say he did, say that he does need it.
Mm-hmm.
Where can you get it?
That will have.
Is it possible to get it?
I, I'd have to talk to the engineers, I'd have to talk to the.
Well, well, actually, if you, if you can't park on the beach, and you can't park on the road, you can't park on the lot across the street.
Well, you shouldn't park on the lot across the street.
But legally, if it's not owned, it's owned by the town or something else, what if they took the lot out and destroyed whatever?
They may be able to get permission to, I think, I think we should go for continuance. I think there's enough information.
No, but I'm just asking, do, do you offhand have any idea where you could get parking?
It's something, you know, I mean, there are, there are neighbors nearby, there's, uh, there's a private beach club, uh, that they could, they could speak with about membership that has a parking area, I mean, there's a number of possibilities. The Moore's Beach Club is, is right around the corner, there's the, uh, there's another one, uh, that.
Well, the Moore's you could, because you have to be in the.
But there, but there's, there's two, there's, there's another one that I'm, I'm blanking on the name of. That I think, you know, if, if that, if that was required, then that's something we'd have to deal with.
Who can ask for a continuance, that's, I mean, oh, we can move that it be continued, that's easy.
There's not enough information in the file to run a decision tonight, so.
So I'd like to move that we continue it.
But before we do that, I'd like to see what else needs to be resolved.
Actually, just really quick before, um, I think we just have to vote on extending the time.
We do, it's past nine-thirty.
Oh, okay, good point.
Anyone want to make a motion?
So a motion to continue for, I don't know, fifteen minutes?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we should be off the list, what we want information on.
All right, so the motion was made by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to continue it, and we will clar- clarify for everybody's sake what we would like.
Um, I'd also want to go back to the question of the, um, legal opinion.
Is, there's also Town Councils?
Well, no, that would be, that was one of the things I was going to bring up.
All right, so let's do it one at a time then. Before we continue anything, does anyone want to make a motion regarding Town Council's opinion, uh, that we have?
I think it should be relea- I would make a motion that it should be released, in fin as to the process.
Does this document?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, so is that a second from you?
Yeah, a second.
All right, so the motion to release Town Council's opinion. Motion was made by Jerry and seconded by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I actually have no problem.
Okay, so we'll release that, and.
Were there any opposed?
Anyone, anyone opposed?
Abstentions.
Abstentions, any?
From alternates, well, alternates can vote on this, can't they?
Vote to release or not?
I think you can.
I think alternates could be voted on.
I, I vote to not release.
Okay.
Yeah, what?
I, I don't have a problem releasing.
Okay.
So the motion passes to release it with one opposed. And that leaves us with continuing it.
Norine, will you be able to email me that tomorrow?
Well, clarification from the Building Commissioner as to parking. Maybe it will stand, maybe it won't. I mean, that's some of the information I thought we were.
It is today's, just because I printed it.
Discussing.
So, in terms.
So if we continue, it'd be to February sixth, I guess.
Well, wait a minute, let's get what we want continued, I mean, I'm sure he could meet something to be, uh.
Well, he's just received a copy of the email, so we can digest that in the meantime.
No, but I'm talking about the, uh, having the, get clarification by the next meeting from the Building Commissioner as to parking spaces. If there's no clarification, the Building Commissioner's stance.
So we would need, so we, we, so we would need, we?
Yes.
The board will need something in writing.
Of course.
From the Building Commissioner.
All right, so we, we have.
Exactly what he's going to require regarding parking in his opinion.
We, we do currently have in the file a requirement from the Building Commissioner.
And he may stick with it.
Requiring two spaces.
Yes.
Which I have asked him to reconsider, and he, it said today, his, his comment to me was, "I haven't had the time given, holidays."
So that's what I was getting to there.
But so, I think absent something else from him, that you have that record.
Yes, we do, I, there's no doubt, but we're asking the attorney to go back and, to the Building Commissioner, because he said he'd get back to him whether it's a positive or negative recommendation.
And as, as far as parking, and I don't know where we get this from, but I would like something very specific about across the street.
Yeah.
It's, it's the in- information in the file, is that.
I know it, I know it's stated.
The Conservation Commission owns the lot across the street.
Oh, okay. They own.
That you cannot designate parking to a private party on conservation land.
So we know that that lot's out.
Yeah, I would, when I read that, I would say that was done deal.
So that, so that lot's out.
And I also don't know if you can.
Share parking.
Provide parking on another lot for your lot.
I don't think so either.
You can't, for such a use.
So that's conservation property?
For the attorney.
No, it's another question, could you, I, I mean, personally, I don't think you can, but.
And I think in some districts, they allow that, but I don't know that that is specified for this district.
I'd like another clarification as to the paragraph we were talking about with or in it, to get, uh, a legal opinion.
So that's something else than your, you want?
Yes, I mean, we've had quite a bit of discussion and Mary and.
Now, so that's two forty-two twenty-one.
Actually, my, my whole thing is on the word construction.
Well, the, how do you want?
It's not on the or.
Well, how do we get an interpretation of the, uh, paragraph, word by word, or?
I mean, so is the question whether or not construction of pilings constitutes construction in structure?
Absolutely, that's what we were talking about.
Okay, all right, that, that clarifies it.
All right. Anything else in terms of the next proposed meeting date? What we're expecting?
I think you'd have to continue to February sixth as the first date, because our January twenty-third meeting is.
That's full. Attorney Cloud, are you available on that date?
Yes.
And I won't, I won't be here. And I won't be here on the February sixth, but we still have five members.
I'd rather a different date.
Quite honestly, I'd rather a different date, if that's the case.
You like him?
Well, the next day would be the twenty-third.
I won't make it on the twenty-third either.
Well, that pushes us to the twentieth.
The twentieth? So you have the sixth to the twentieth.
I'll make it easy, I'm going to be off the entire month of February.
Um, twentieth it is, that'll give us time to get.
I thought we, I thought we had one on the thirteenth.
But that's just for that one item, it's not, it's not a, it's a quickie, it's a roll, it's not a, because we're, we're only every other week.
So does anyone want to make a motion to the, to the twentieth?
So I'll make a motion to continue to February twentieth.
Is there a second?
Second is that.
All right, motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And because I only extended fifteen minutes, we're going to have to do a quickie on anything else as well.
Well, can we amend your amendment?
Uh, just make a quick, let's skip that.
Yeah, make it quick.
All right, uh, moving on to our, whoop, we gave you those without the file.
That's what I was looking for.
There it is. All right, moving on to our open meeting items, voting the minutes for November twenty-first, December fifth, and December twelfth.
I abstain from the twenty-first, I wasn't there.
What were the dates?
November twenty-first, December fifth, December twelfth.
So I didn't look over December twelve, the other two.
I did. So we'll table the twelfth, uh, as twenty-first, has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes.
And Jerry, you'll be abstaining. Any variations to make?
No.
No.
All right, anyone want to make a motion?
The motion to accept the minutes of, which one is it, twenty-first, yeah, November twenty-first?
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Ed and seconded by Mary, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with one abstention being Jerry. Uh, December fifth, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Want to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes for December fifth.
When does my fifteen minutes end?
How about right after this?
Well, no, because we will probably, yeah, because we'll need extended.
Right after this vote.
Yeah.
So is there a second?
A second.
All right, s- uh, motion to accept the minutes of December fifth was made by Ed, seconded by Bob, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're tabling the twelfth. Is there another motion to be made?
No, no updates, we have to do item three.
Oh, I, I was talking about extending.
Oh, yes, let's extend, uh.
To the end of the agenda.
Yeah. Fifteen more minutes if needed.
All right, so is there a second to that motion to extend the time? Uh, that goes to Ken, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, with board updates, I just want to call everyone's attention to the appearances of conflicts at Mass General Law two sixty-eight A, section twenty-three B and three, I know there was a situation earlier tonight where that was addressed. Norine's provided copies of that, just please review that. With regard to an appearance of any potential conflict, all board members have to, uh, make that disclosure, whatever it might be, if it's a personal relationship, if you're, uh, have business together, anything that creates, in the key language, is an appearance of a conflict. The most ideal situation is that you fill out that application, uh, before the meeting. First, you, you inform Norine, and this also goes to just reviewing the agenda, uh, or reviewing the future dates, looking at who's applying, seeing the address, if anything rings a bell. I've already informed Norine about one, uh, conflict that I'll be having, and looking at it tonight, I see a second one, so Norine, I'll be sending you an email about a second conflict that I have, uh, in addition to the one that I already told you about a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so just please, please, please be cognizant of that.
And we do file with, because we're appointed with the administrator, not the clerk.
Town clerk, I think.
No, so.
No, because we're appointed, we have to file with Norine.
See, there's a difference between whether you are elected or appointed. You are an appointed body, so for a filing, a copy is typically given to me.
Correct.
And then it's given to the selectman, it does not go to the clerk. The, the boards that file with the clerk are publicly elected officials, board of selectmen, planning board.
I, I was misadvised by others, not you.
So do you, do you supply it to the selectmen, or do we supply one of you in?
I do.
Yeah, that would make sense.
But so it's just important that, you know, for public perception, they're relying on you guys to be fair and impartial. And so if your daughter took belly lessons with the developer's daughter, whatever it is, it's always easiest just to put that on the table. And if there's no opposition, people are typically courteous and they understand small community, people know people. But if you've got a relationship, small community, everybody knows, right? So it's easier just to say, or, you know, we know black and white, we have to reduce, right? But there's a lot of gray area, and the public really counts on the perception.
Right.
Anything, or, anything else regarding that topic, or?
State Ethics Commission also has a helpline number with an attorney available that you can call at any time and ask, they can give you an informal opinion of counsel that you can rely on, if you've got an issue, and they're very helpful.
And they've also posted, uh, past decisions that they've, uh.
As well as fines.
As well as, are they getting around to fines?
Enforcement decisions, show you why it is important.
And you also have Town Council, who is, uh, very responsive, so if you ever call or whatever, they'll get right back to you.
So going forward, maybe just bring Norine in the loop as soon as possible, whether it's looking over the future dates, seeing any names that might ring a bell, if you have any issues, any questions about, uh, any potential conflict, just ask Norine and we can go from there. Anything else for board updates?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, just looking at the future schedule and for Norine, uh, on March fifth, I will be boarding a flight for Aer Lingus when this meeting is starting, I will not be here that day.
Okay.
Is the destination Ireland? Fantastic.
Shannon McGonigal.
We have, uh.
So we have, uh, three, if we're also with board updates, uh, vote on an engagement letter regarding thirty-three Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth.
We're getting engaged?
Good letter.
It's a professional engagement. Uh, so, uh, Norine's reached out, uh, to attorney, I'm missing his name in front of me right now.
Oh, here you go. This is Frank's attorney and this is.
Right, so there was two attorneys, uh, to engage as special counsel representing us with regard to thirty-three Pheasant Lane. Uh, one is Michael Giamo, and I'm sure I mispronounced his name. Uh, the other is David McKay, uh, and they both have a wealth of experience regarding representing municipalities and town boards with related cases. Uh, so, Norine, I'll defer to you as exactly how to proceed in terms of any potential vote, voting one over the other, and how to go from there.
So, um, I actually was in touch with Michael Giamo, um, I've known him for a number of years. Uh, he's got an exceptional reputation, I reached out to him, um, on advice of Town Council that we would need outside counsel for this particular appeal. Separately, apparently, I didn't realize that Town Council also knew someone and was in contact with them as well, and probably to make sure that the board had coverage for any appeal that may be filed. So, um, you have two attorneys before you, um, with their resumes attached, and, you know, it's up to your choice, whichever, whoever you prefer to go.
I would move that we go with Michael Giamo based on my reading of his qualifications.
Yeah, I would second that too, reading his bio and, you know, all the information presented, he seems that his qualifications would be the best. Yeah, I would second that too, reading his bio and, you know, all the information presented, he seems that his qualifications would be the best.
Right, so the motion was made by Ken and second by, oh, I'm sorry, Mary, do you have any?
No, I'll second it if you need one.
Oh, uh, Bob seconded it, so we'll, we'll go with Bob, sorry, Mary, next time. So, uh, motion to retain Michael Giamo as special counsel regarding thirty-three Pheasant Lane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'm assuming Ed did not.
And, yeah, there's, yeah, and one abstention. And number four, we have board discussion, further board discussion relating to thirty-three Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth, is there anything further to discuss regarding that?
I don't think so at this time.
Okay. Future agenda items? Seeing none, our next meeting is January twenty-third here at Town Hall, six-thirty. Meeting adjourned.